So we'll call the meeting to order. This is October 17th. First item is an update to the board. This is from Chapacaw Crossing in terms of East Village, 480 Bedford Road. This is the update regarding the completion of the Solano River interchange and where we are with that. So I guess Greg, is that yours?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So my understanding is that the exchange is now working? The DOT has actually got the lights working and the lanes working?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town staff. That is correct, Mr. Chairman. The MTA and DOT have coordinated the signal switch over. The new signals are live and the old signals have been removed. The, it is my understanding they're going to try to complete the pavement marking work later this week, weather pending. And there's also been a preliminary punch list generated, you know, from the DOT. So I think we're, I think we're generally on track, you know, to wrap this work up over the next, you know, several weeks. And we're looking forward to being able to close this permit as quick as possible for, for the town and, and for the other parties involved, which is good news.
Yes. You expect that we'll have this all finished and done and wrapped up by the end of the year?
That's, that is our hope, Mr. Chairman. That is our hope. It, it appears to be very feasible to accomplish that.
Okay, great. Now, we had some limitations on your building permits and COs. Are those impacting you at all at this point, or you still okay with those?
We are still... Yeah, we, we appreciate that. We are not currently impacted. And if, if for any reason we would be, you know, do become impacted, we would absolutely reach out to the town and the board to let you know the status of that.
Great. Okay. Appreciate the report. And I guess what we'll just do is just carry this forward on the agenda. Just check base and see what the next status report might be. Do you want to schedule something for the second meeting in November? Or do you prefer the, you know, first week, first meeting in December? Your choice.
I, yeah, I would prefer, if, if acceptable, to push it to that first week of December. And if there's any developments in the meantime, we would absolutely share those with the board and staff.
Terrific. Okay, appreciate it.
Great.
Any questions or comments from board members or staff?
Yeah, I have something which is unrelated to the intersection, but I think there's an outstanding item. Maybe it doesn't need to be an agenda item. Maybe we could just respond by email, but there was the retaining wall mockups.
That's next item. We actually invented the agenda for that, so that we can...
Is that the new one?
Yes.
Yep. All right, good. So about the... Is it time for that?
Almost. As I say, too soon. Bob, did you have any comments or questions about ceiling?
No, sir. Everything seems good. We had the punches from them, so I'm comfortable with what Greg is saying.
Super. Okay, so we'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is the resolution. This is regarding the Chapacaw Crossing East Village. And we did have these mockups of the retaining walls, and they gave us a couple of different styles to look at. One for the Cowton Lane wall, and then the other for the internal wall on the western side of the development on the hill that's being built right now, or re-fabricated, I guess, right now. So I don't know if anyone is actually physically able to get out there and see the mockups. They invited us to go out there, but it seems like every single weekend it's been raining and muddy, so it hasn't really been conducive to a visit. But I, I think, actually, I think Cano was gonna go. I don't know if you guys went, but we've seen the pictures, and I think Bob has got pictures right now, renditions.
Yeah, that's Felicia. Thanks, Felicia.
Oh, thank you, Felicia. So that's the style on the western side wall that's going to be built, where the road is being raised seven, eight feet, and that'll be the, the internal wall, if you will, which looks like a fieldstone finish. Looks quite handsome, but thoughts?
Well, I, I did get out there. And the other one is a big ass concrete faux stone product. And I think that this one, first of all, is appropriate for what essentially would be the public face of the project along that roadway. And I, I think that, you know, I probably would argue that maybe, you know, the color should be more gray and a few, fewer beiges, but I mean, that's just being a little bit too precious about it. I think that it will be fine, especially since a lot of the stone in the development, in the houses themselves, foundation wallstone facing tends to be more in the beige in some of the houses. So I think this probably is a pretty good mix. And I, I think it's, I think it's great. I think it's gonna be just fine for that, for that public exposure, for that retaining wall.
And I think it's gonna have the same slate finish on top, too, the top course, yeah, probably.
That's my impression.
Dick, are you able to see it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's nice. I don't care.
Looking at engineer. As long as it works.
As long as it stands up there for 50 years, okay. I'd give it a C. And if it goes 150 with the best cements, you know, that would be wonderful.
Any questions, Bob?
I'm with both Tom and Dick.
Okay, okay. So do you want to put the other one up?
She's working on it.
Okay. So this will be on the wall on the Cowton hillside to retain the soils there. I think the nearest home is 500 feet from this wall. And we have all that vegetation now that used to be a wetland, but it's really grown in. So it's really going to be blocking that hill, if not immediately, certainly the next year or two afterwards.
Yeah, you'll get partial views.
Yeah, so it's, it's gonna be fairly invisible. But in any event, I thought the earth tones were fine with the grays that blended with the soil in the hillside, but what do I know?
I'm sorry, is it between those two walls, or this is the other wall?
This is the other wall.
All right, this is, looks terrible. It's a beautiful photo. The sky looks nice, but I don't know. This doesn't look new. It looks like, I don't know. Again, I'm not a... I don't know. I defer to Tom, but I, I think this looks not nice.
Well, I think it looks, I'm just not a fan of the product.
Yeah.
Generally, the product. And then the coloring of it is, is, I don't care for the coloring of it either. The fact that it's dark is probably good, because it's not quite as dark as it appears in this photograph.
Yeah, it just looks like this is after the fire.
Yeah.
That's what it looks like to me.
And so it, this side of it's really in shade right now. So with the sun on, it's a little bit brighter and the color's a little bit more contrast in terms of a lot of reds and browns in there and, and, you know, the darker blues and grays. I'm not a big fan of it, but I actually think that the specific colors, but I actually think the extent to which it's modeled like that will make it look more natural in the landscape. And it really is quite far away from the frontage of the homes. And there is, there is a lot of sort of natural landscape between that. And I would expect over time vegetation actually grew up at the base of this thing and have it disappear more into the landscape. So I wouldn't recommend this for a roadside application. But for where it's gonna be, I think it's probably gonna be inoffensive, and after a while, it'll be pretty much practically invisible. Because it's very far away from homes, and it's not gonna be, these walls are not that high there, I don't think.
They get to be pretty high in some ways, yeah. But did we have, did we require that these walls would be stepped? So that there was gonna be some vegetation every eight feet or so? And then little setbacks like three or four feet where they could plant some vegetation? It seems to me that Andy proposed that, and I think we thought it was a good idea. Yeah, I think so. So that's, that will add even more...
Yeah, you're not gonna see this after a while.
Yeah, and I think that will even accelerate its invisibility.
Yes.
I, I actually commend over this for going to the trouble to actually do this, because, you know, another application would just be applying, you know, concrete retaining walls, center block retaining wall, but they're making an extra effort here to, you know, to upgrade it.
Yep.
And I appreciate that.
Okay. Well, Dick, did you... As long as it stands, it's okay?
Yeah, sure.
I think the same way Dick stands. As long as we get the certifications and it's built right, that's all I care about.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a resolution in front of us that was drafted. So it's, it's a short one, and it's basically saying that we approve of these two, these two stone versions for these two walls. So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so we're all set. Thank you. Okay, next item is... Great, well, our next item...
I needed to vote on that. Did he, did he agree? He needed to vote on that.
Who did?
Dick.
Did you vote on that, Dick? Did you say aye?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing. This is on the Graves' application. This is at 123 Random Farms Drive. This is an application for a site development plan approval to replace and expand a deck into the clearing and grading limit lines and the removal of a basketball court. We last heard this as an informal back in June. This is the first of the public hearings. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Yes, it's you.
Since it was last June...
Wally, can you take the microphone, please? Thank you.
Since it was back in June that we first presented, we're just gonna quickly go through the issue again. Two things. The proposed deck intruded was within the limit lines of the, the grading area. The second thing was that there was a basketball court in this zone. Basketball court would be removed, and we've modified the design so that it shows us that. There's the setback, and then there's the, the conservation limit. So in order to solve the problem of the conservation, we out-calculated the amount of square footage. It adds up to 268 square feet in the red area. That intrudes into the conservation area. The previous presentation, this walkway stairs was protruding in here and here. We decided to put a curb on it, so to get it out of the setback. So that's intended to solve the problem of the new deck and where it sat. And the other issue was the, its encroachment into the conservation area, which, as I mentioned, we solved that problem by moving the deck. The other thing is that the, all of the things that went on relative to the moving the basketball court, we're proposing to remove the basketball court. The client has presented to us a landscape plan, which was submitted to you the last time around, in which there's a whole proposal for regrowth on the... In addition to which, after the hurricane, which knocked out all of the trees here, he went back in and put in a whole bunch of trees, a tune of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So he's obviously working in good faith, I think. The other issue had to do with the first meeting issue that I thought... That Sabrina, you had a difference of a lot area.
We rectified that.
Yeah, we did. We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay. So in other words, all the items on A, B, C, D, and E are resolved, I guess? To your satisfaction? It's a question.
There's still some issues.
All right.
I'll wait for the board.
Okay, okay.
So at the end of the day, now that you've amended the, the landing of the stairs coming down, what is the total incursion in, in the 70-foot buffer?
200 and... 268 square feet.
And those, basically, those two triangles? Yeah, those. Okay.
For the deck and the house, there was some issue with the walkway. There was a walkway?
The walkway's been removed, is being removed.
All the walkways?
Yeah, yeah. It's walkway here.
What about...
And the retaining wall.
All that's being removed?
Yeah.
And the removal of the basketball court is, is how many square feet?
I don't know. I don't remember. Six, five, four, about 2400 square feet.
2400.
Yeah. It wasn't a full court, it was a half court. So the rest of the issues, well, I'll just, I'll just wait until Sabrina has a chance to say her thing, because I think that most of these things are, are resolved, I think.
Well, I, I can, Mr. Chairman, if you would make...
Yes, please, enjoy it, yep.
So, so the, the couple of remaining issues that I have with the project are building coverage. The building coverage on the site, the limit, the maximum permitted building coverage is 4,740 square feet. With the deck, we are looking at upwards of 600, 6,530.5 square feet of building coverage. That requires a variance from the ZBA of 1,700, of 1,700 and 90.1 square feet of building coverage. So roughly 1,700 square feet, almost 1,800 square feet in building coverage. So they would need to go to the ZBA for a variance for that, because they exceed the code requirement. In addition, development coverage, I know that you're removing a lot of things, but there's still an existing stone wall, I believe, on the plans that was not included in the development coverage calculations. So I would need you to resubmit that development coverage, so we can see whether or not you're within the 9,787.54 or 44 square foot allowance.
Okay.
Okay, so that needs to be resubmitted, both the plan and the calculations worksheet. The, the applicant's saying that they're not wanting to to alter the clearing and grading limit line, that they just want approval to disturb it and use it without redrawing it. I think that they should probably redraw the clearing and grading limit line, and, you know, the environmental coordinator can speak to the mitigations that would be required. But I think that's really the last issue that the planning board needs to address, if you're willing to let them do the disturbance that they're proposing.
Yep.
And that's the sum of my comments.
As far as the variance, we obviously are gonna pending your approval, we're gonna go for variance.
Right.
Because we could tear you the building down.
Right. But to Sabrina's point, to the extent that you can give us the precise numbers, I think, once the sidewalks are pulled up, the walk is pulled up, etc.
My understanding is that we're removing the basketball court, removing the retaining wall, removing the walkway, and that should...
I thought there was another walkway that happened to be within the area along the side of the house there?
No, I mean, once you see it, it's on, it's on the walk. If that's all of this right here, that's all there is. Still be taken out.
It should be noted also, you know, you've marked on the, the map down there the incremental increase in, in the 70-foot buffer, but in fact, part of the building already, when it was built, it looks like the, the two corners were in the 70-foot buffer. Is that what it's up again?
Not the deck.
Just the deck?
Well, look at your picture down there. Isn't it with two corners of a house?
That's a deck, I guess.
It's a deck.
Was that built, was that, was that built with a house, the deck? Is that the original deck?
No, the deck.
The deck is a blue line.
The deck, one was built in a form.
Oh, I see.
See that?
I see, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, confusing, okay.
Yeah. It's a little bit confusing.
Yes, okay.
It's a much larger deck there, I'm assuming.
Yes.
So the, the... So let me just, to understand this, in order for the building coverage, you are non-conforming right now, is that right? And in any event, you would have to go to the ZBA to get variance, get into conformance.
Absolutely.
And is it true, then, that you are also asking for an additional building coverage in order to expand the deck?
I would have to say yes, because, because the deck is bigger than the previous deck. The house remains the same, so...
Right. So you're trying to get into conformance for something which is already over by 1,000, 1,500 square feet, and then ask for more?
Well, if you were looking at it that way...
I do look at it that way.
The way I look at it is when the building was built, the size of the, of the building exceeded the allowable. How the town let that happen, I don't know.
But he's asking you to tear the building down.
I know, but the inference is that we're supposed to do something. We're not gonna tear the building down.
No, I'm not inferring that. What I'm inferring is that maybe there is an unreasonable ask to, to get more by building the deck, building out the deck. And to the extent that it's actually, in this proposal anyway, being built in this, in this setback, and the, it looks like it's...
Well, I mean, the answer to your question...
It's only about, I guess, 80, 70...
The only, the only issue I have is going for variance, right? If I apply for a variance and I get the variance, then everything is fine.
No, you still have a...
Because you are asking, right now, you're asking the planning board to allow you to encroach within a 70-foot setback in a conservation subdivision, as well encroach within a clearing and grading limit line?
Yes.
That is the ask of this board. So set aside the fact that the house was built above and beyond the allowable building coverage. There's nothing that this board is gonna do about that. But you're asking for a larger deck than what was originally approved and built that is encroaching within a conservation setback, as well as a clearing and grading limit line. That's the ask of this board.
Right. And we're asking that for 268 square feet, which the last time we made the presentation, you didn't seem to have any problem with that.
Well, but there was no decision last time. This is just a public hearing.
I'm just quoting what you said.
I don't remember what I said, but I'm, I'm not sure I said that. I said there was no problem, but that's neither here nor there. It really doesn't matter at this point, I don't think. So I understand that there is a pre-existing condition of a non-conforming coverage. I don't see any, I mean, nobody's gonna ask any, I don't think nobody's gonna ask, you know, anybody to tear the building down, obviously. But to suggest, maybe you aren't suggesting this, but the notion that this property owner would be able to, should be allowed to expand on that, this property owner is already enjoying the benefits of a building which is bigger than it should be on the site. And to ask, and to ask for more benefits, I think is, you know, is a question... I don't know, it's a question for us in terms of the, the incursion into the buildings, into the setback. There's no hardship here.
Well, Tom, it's such a thing that two wrongs make a right. The, the building was exceeded, and the town approved it. To me, that's two wrongs make a right.
I don't understand that.
Well, the, the town approved a, a, a square footage of the building, which was not allowed. They approved it.
We're not penalizing you for that.
No, no, but your, your argument is that I'm exceeding it by somebody's square, by 200 square feet because of the size of the footprint. And I'm saying that, what I'm asking is that I don't see that it's, I don't see the 268 square feet showing that much of an issue.
Okay.
But that's up to you, obviously.
Yeah, well, it's, it's only probably gonna be up to the ZBA. I don't know where we're gonna end up on this. But I guess I, I'm just, I just feel uncomfortable with it. And I'm not sure whether the ask, there's no, we often look at these things and say, well, gee, there's a hardship here. This person doesn't have the opportunity to really enjoy the use of their property. And these things are, you know, it's maybe de minimis, and, and, you know, and we're not setting a bad precedent, so maybe we can give a little bit.
I'm not asking you for that.
And I'm, I'm just, I'm just not entirely sure whether those criteria apply to this situation right now.
If I may add a little bit more information, this, our coverage law went into effect in 1995. This house was given building permits prior to 1995, which is why it is exceeding coverage right now. It's the fact that they're asking for more coverage that is then bringing this whole thing into, out of conformance with the coverage requirements. I think it's important for you to have that background, because I, you're saying, why do they allow it? We didn't have those laws at the time we were...
Yes, but you're bringing it up.
I bring it up because you are changing coverage by building the deck.
Yeah, just from my standpoint, just legally, because, you know, you have to go to zoning board. You know, what I'm used to seeing is, you know, okay, from like an engineer plan versus architectural, I have like pre-existing conditions, then I have what you're proposing to do and the metrics for that, in terms of, here's your coverage, your development building, here's what you have now, and it's all numbers, because you're gonna go to ZBA, it's all about the metrics that you're gonna have to show. What I don't see, and what I like to see in the next submission, is I need a clear understanding, whether through a bulk table or exactly what it is you're proposing, what, what does you have now on site, the numbers? What are you gonna take away, and what that, what that net number is gonna be that you're asking for in terms of the variance? That's what, at least, what I need to see from, from my standpoint. And this board has to understand that as well. You need to show the metrics of what, what that percentage is. Because you're gonna go to ZBA, but we need to understand that, and what, what exactly it is you're asking for. And just so I understand, the, the red is what you proposed to remove? Is that what you're, or is that... Because your back was towards me when you were presenting, that's why I didn't, I didn't see it. It's okay.
The deck, the new deck, is that rectangle.
Okay.
And that, that semi-T shape is the stairs going down. That's the proposal. The existing is that line. It's, the strip of track is on it. So what we're talking about is we're building a new deck, which is, is what Sabrina's talking about and what Tom's talking about, to the 2, 268 square feet. And that difference, what's there now, what we're proposing.
Yeah, I just wanna see, like I said, when I, when I see, like, these are architectural, I see engineer drawings, like, you do by an engineer, you have a bulk table that says, what, what my percentage, what my variance is gonna be for building and, and development coverage? I just want a clear understanding of exactly what it is, because you're gonna have that information for zoning board, as well as this board.
So the, the existing deck, so help a little bit, I think, the existing deck is 653 square feet. The proposed deck is 921 square feet.
And that's all, well, I just, but I just need that in submission, you know, bulk table, just to show me exactly. Is that what I'm missing from, from this submission? That's what I need to see.
Well, I mean, this is part of our submission. It was part of the submission.
I think I'm new to the party, so I'm just saying for, for, when you have to resubmit, what I, what I gotta see is just a bulk table, and it's exactly that. Okay, I know you're kind of pointing to, you know, different items, what's here, what's there, but it's gotta be all on one sheet, so that exactly I know what this board knows and what ZBA is gonna look at in terms of considering your variance application at all.
But at the end, what we're talking about also on the coverages is that 7, 1,800 square feet extra.
Yes.
Over and above.
Over and above.
Right.
And you know there's portions of that 1,800 that are accountable, that are attributed to the house built.
Of course.
All right, and that...
It's good grandfather, essentially.
Yes, exactly. But I have to, I have to raise this, because the deck is, the, the original deck is definitely built respecting the conservation line.
Yes, no question.
There's no doubt about it. They are asking to change the orientation of that deck and, and encroach into that conservation line. That is within the purview of your board.
Right.
Okay, so set aside the coverage, because the size of the deck is gonna be what's added to that coverage. It's very justifiable, given there was no coverage before. If you allow it, then the, and you recommended, the ZBA will grant that.
Now, the, the coverage for the sport court that's being pulled up, that's part of the overage right now.
Right.
That's being pulled up, so is your 1,800 net of taking off the 2,200 or 2,400 of the, the sport court?
It's still over. It's still over.
Okay. Do we know what that number is? How much we're over and the sport court's...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
The sport court is development coverage. It is not building coverage. It is the building coverage right now that's over. I don't have all of the numbers for everything that constitute development coverage.
We need that.
Yes.
Hey, could I, can I, can I say something here?
Sure.
To Lino's point, I mean, I think the surveyor, of all people, should really sit down with Sabrina and demonstrate to her, and she should speak to the surveyor on exactly what has to be shown. So, when it goes to the zoning board, it's going to be a really good map of what exactly is there, because all due respect, the working off of your plan as an architect, working off the landscape architect's plan, and Paul Jennings' plan, it's just not that concise. In my mind, coming back from a surveying background, an engineering background, a draftsman background, the only person to solve Sabrina's problem now, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Sabrina, is the surveyor to show it on a map. And I think Sabrina doesn't have all that information. Am I missing something, Sabrina?
No, you're, you're correct, Bob.
Hey, can I ask a question? So, there's the coverage question, um, development coverage, building coverage, but it sounds like that, if this moves forward, that's a ZBA question?
Correct.
And the question really before us is this encroachment into the, the conservation easement. And of course, considering the coverage piece, because that's a secondary question that we have to sort, on, on some level, give an opinion on or a recommendation to the ZBA. But ultimately, the court, the reason this is before us is because of the conservation easement encroachment, correct?
And the clearing, green room.
Yeah, there's two lines. There's the conservation easement, because it is within a conservation subdivision, and there was a buffer placed on the properties. The second is you had a clearing and grading limit line drawn on the property, and this project is exceeding both.
Right, the basketball court was completely within the clearing and grading limit, right?
The basketball, yes, that, that is assorted history, that basketball.
And it's also in the buffer zone.
And having it be removed is a very, very positive thing.
Right.
Well, yes, but we could, we could require it to be removed.
Yes, you can.
This is a...
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. It's not necessarily a, a give.
Correct.
In the initial, um, presentation, I, I'm not sure whether, if you guys or someone, I think Bob might have gone out there. The first thing that came up, before anything else would have happened, we'd have to get rid of the basketball court, before we even talk about the deck. So, that was very clear to me when I came on board.
Okay. So, uh, Eldad, yes, that's what's before us.
Right, but just from a conservation easement, the initial question that, that sort of triggers this to come to us, what's the, the number of square feet that is proposed to be within the conservation easement? Is this this forty-nine plus eighty-nine and a half plus twenty-two?
Yes, yes, that's the, the little...
Okay, so that's like a hundred and fifty, a hundred and forty?
Two hundred and sixty-eight square feet.
No, that's...
No.
That's a...
That's the three areas.
No, it's not, well, that's according to the drawing.
Say again?
It's, it's eighty, it's ninety plus twenty-two plus forty-nine. That's not two hundred.
Should be a hundred and sixty-one or something.
Um, yeah, okay.
One sixty, forty-five possibly?
Yeah, that one there is a bell.
Yeah, this is why we need this table with the, referring to a survey as the reference document.
Sabrina, a question for you. This chart here is, is a zoning chart. Does that help at all in terms of, does that answer any of the questions?
Yeah, I'm sure I reviewed these while you, when I reviewed this, and, and you have required existing proposed... What you don't, I have nothing to verify these numbers. What I said is you're missing calculation of a wall. And you need to include that.
It's, um...
You, you can, you don't tell it to me right now.
Don't worry, I'm not going to.
So, maybe...
Is that what it is?
A wall.
What was it? There you go.
Maybe we should...
You can, I, I can't do anything with that number right now.
Maybe we should send this back to the committee, as it were, and...
Well, we need, we need that information is clear, but we also, we should take the, the thoughts from Dennis and from Bob also, so that you have, um, all the comments. So, Bob, you want to run through your comments?
Uh, sure, uh, thank you, Chairman and members of the board. A lot of my comments coming from a draftsman of many years ago is really drafting items. Um, and this is, been in my memos since the first iteration. I think I'm on review number three now. And I've given you the site plan, and I've given you the filed map, and I think with those two maps I had given you, with comment one, everything in its entirety, not just a little sketch by where the deck is of the seventy-foot buffer area, it's really not a conservation easement, it's a buffer area, and the clearing and grading throughout the whole contiguous lot should be shown. I've given you the maps every time, but for some reason, you don't show the whole thing. This is all, has to be memorialized on a map. It's everything we're doing now, guys. Mr. Toscano is going to be memorialized in the future, and if it's not complete now, someone's going to look at these maps five years from now, and we're not going to know what we have. Please, put everything on the map that I've given you. I've given you the two maps that were approved by the board in nineteen ninety-two. I gave you the subdivision map, which shows everything you need to show, and I'd recommend having a civil engineer do this, so that's number one. Uh, number two is just a minor item, the Blantsky of architect labeled two joints, the same number. I would recommend you call one L one, L two, going to create all kinds of confusion. Number three, now, okay, let me finish my comments first, please. Uh, number three, obviously, you're disturbing about ninety-two hundred square feet. You're going to have to get the NOI from the DEC, just for erosion controls. And also, too, I think Sabrina talked about it, everyone talked about it up to this point, you have to show the whole clearing and grading that was on the approved site plan that I had given you three times, that was approved by the board in nineteen ninety-two, revised in nineteen, uh, June third, nineteen ninety-two. And you have to show the exact area that's going to be modified based on the new improvements that you're putting there, and it's all going to be looked at by the board, planning board, and they have to condone it. And that map's got to be critical, and it's got to be accurate, and it's got to include the whole site, not just little piecemeal sections, because it's very difficult to try to figure out what you're doing if you don't have a complete map, which shows what was there in ninety-two, and what you want to do now, because that's going to be the genesis of the whole declaration, and it's going to be the genesis of the new map of the amended clearing and grading limit line, which you're going to need, because I think the architect or someone stated that they're not going to change it, but it has to be changed, because you're encroaching into it. So, that's number four. And number five is really just a typo. It seems to me you show fifty-seven feet on one of your maps, it should be sixty. It looks like it is sixty, but yet it's just a typo. And then, number six, I just had some comments on your architectural plan going, that's enough, that this map has to be done, which is very clear and concise, and very accurate as well, which shows everything that the board needs to see, and everything that Sabrina needs to see, all on one map, um, because we can't be looking at three or four or five different maps, and each one of them doesn't even correlate each other, and it's going to be very, very difficult to have one approved plan when you have all these different types of plans done by different disciplines that don't correlate. So, those are my comments tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The question you have...
Conservation easements, conservation easements are very important to us.
Yeah. Hang on, what?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Dick has some comments. Dick, you want to go ahead?
Yes. Conservation easements are not everywhere in, uh, Newcastle. They're there in special places where there were special problems and objectives that were made back starting in ninety-two or thereabouts. It's, uh, it may seem silly to, um, you know, to say, oh, well, it's only two or four hundred feet more into the conservation easement, or whatever the easements are, you know, going to be pertinent here. The answer is, well, that's a problem, because next person will ask for a thousand, and the next person will ask for five thousand. You know, so that, it was set up so that it, that it shouldn't be, you know, pushed around and changed around, and I'm glad that, you know, that it's most likely that the basketball court is going to disappear. That's going to help mollify, uh, I think, thinking of some of us. But, uh, just to say, well, gee, what's the big deal? We'll just go to the, uh, the zoning board. At this point, uh, I, I wouldn't vote for that, and if you, if we have, going to have a vote for that now, which I don't think we are, I would say nay. So, it has to go and get more work, and as Mr. Seole said, that we have to have, you know, one map that we agree on, all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Dick. Then Stu, well...
Uh, back to Bob.
Okay.
I'm still confused, obviously, uh, about these setbacks. What we're talking about, what we're talking about, and it's saying, show the whole thing. Are you talking about extending these lines? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I sent you the map, uh, the filed map that was done in nineteen eighty-five by Carol Campbell that shows the con, the buffer going continuously from east to west, to north, to south. And you have to show that throughout the whole back of the property. For some reason, you only show a little piecemeal section of it by it. All I'm simply saying, all I'm simply saying is just extend it and show it the exact same way I have provided you these maps. It's very simple.
You are hung up on the fact that the, the limit lines are shown have to do with the property, whether they extend over to here or over there, has nothing to do with anything. But if you want me to draw the line, I will, but that's, that's all there is to it, I gather. Is that right?
But also too, also too, you didn't show, again, the clearing and grading limit line that's shown on the approved site plan that I had given you, that the planning board had approved in nineteen ninety-two. I've given it to you in PDF each and every time, and you still don't show it. It's got to be shown.
That's the, that's the, that's the one right there.
No, it's not correct. I, I don't want to, I don't want to go over the details now, if you want to meet with me in, in the conference room. Now's not the time, now's not the time to debate this. Meet with me this week, and I'll go over with you in more detail.
Yes, I tried, Bob, and all of us, you, you've kind of given me sort of little curtsey answers. So, I, I look forward to you, with you getting nitty-gritty, which I've been trying to do, but for some reason, you kind of fluff me off a little bit.
I don't recall that, I don't know what you're speaking of.
Okay.
But the, the, this is not the first time we've talked about having this single, um, integrated plan.
Yeah, sure.
That we...
I thought that's what this was.
Yeah.
With all of the...
No, it's not, because what we have is you have an architectural rendering, then we have that map, and what Bob is talking about, what Sabrina's talking about, is putting this all together on an integrated plot plan. That's what we always have.
That's what I thought this was.
Yeah. Well, it, it's, it's, it's missing, uh, important features, though, so that's, that's the issue.
Okay.
So, Dennis, you had comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First comments, I guess, if there's going to be a re-submission, these are just have to do on the, uh, site application form, just with respect to some box checking, same to the, uh, seeker form. So, what seems to be getting lost in all of this is that the sports court is, is an open violation. So, um, the way that everything is labeled, uh, it's, um, it's assuming everything to be categorized as mitigation. So, I'm trying to sort of separate these out. I think I, I used the term last time, independent utility, to steal from the core of engineers, and that's kind of how I'm looking at this. So, that, um, plan that you had, uh, I think it's important, um, to add another sort of note and, and drawing a, um, under proposed mitigation, just delete everything about removal from a basketball court and add a new title called proposed removal of seven twenty-seven twelve memorandum of violation, and under that title, just write removal of the basketball court. And, and the reason I'm being a bit of a stickler for this is because, you know, since a permit was never issued, it was never agreed to any types of compensatory mitigation. So, in essence, you're just kind of turning back the clock to restore the area to whatever we determine is sort of that, that baseline to be. You're not, you're not getting any credits, for lack of a better, better term. We're just trying to, you know, undo, uh, a, a violation here, you know, that has existed for over ten years, just to try to kind of reset the clock, for lack of a better description. And then with respect to that, uh, violation and the definition of restoration, so, you know, obviously, I, I wasn't here, and you did provide some documentation, uh, via an aerial photo, and show that, um, you know, there's a post-dense, mature, evergreen condition that was reduced to lawn, um, for the baseline of restoration, because of the consequences of a, of a hurricane resulting in the removal of those evergreens that were sort of an essential part of the property. I would assume then, at that point, you know, the applicant, of course, then, you know, removes fallen timber, grounds out stumps, and scarrifies the area, you know? Uh, that's, so, didn't want to revegetate, uh, in a fashion that was there before, okay? Um, and as a supplement, uh, the applicant, um, decided to relocate the trees more towards the perimeter of the property, and it was also, uh, evergreens as well. So, you know, the photo, I, I'm accepting this, but I do write the statement, you seem to have suffered a disproportionate amount of tree loss relative to the surrounding desert tree areas remaining. Fine, if the planning board is inclined to accept this situation, this targeted situation as the baseline for restoration, then I have no further comments that you're just going to restore the area to lawn. That's fine, that to me takes care of, let's say, the category of restoration. Now, with respect to the wetlands, and I'm looking at the buffer, so the delineation and mitigation planting plan, there's also a proposal on the table, uh, over an approximate fourteen hundred square foot area to, um, revegetate near, uh, or adjacent to a stream with mostly woody shrub-dominated plantings, you know, within this herb store, herb understory. If we were to just consider that as sort of compensation for this hundred and sixty and a half square foot deck encroaching into the conservation easement, well, okay, fine, that would obviously more than compensate for that. But I, I do feel that, you know, even though you're restoring the basketball court, you're restoring it to lawn, which, you know, obviously functionally in the, in the buffer is, is, is very low in, in quality, uh, for turf cover. So, it is acceptable to consider some of that fourteen hundred square foot of mitigation for not only, uh, if you want to satisfy it from a conservation perspective for the deck, but actual for the wetlands buffer impact, which is basically, um, establish, or re-establishing nineteen hundred and seventy-five square feet of lawns, where, you know, prior to the hurricane, obviously, that conservation easement served in a much different capacity and had a higher, higher value to the, uh, to not only the wetland buffer, but, but, but to the yard. So, uh, it's being a little, you know, I, I am kind of parsing this out, because otherwise, if you were to consider just removing the court and, and restoring it as mitigation, then you've kind of created an avenue to just, well, why go ahead and get permits? Let's just keep this as long as we can, and then we'll restore, we'll get mitigation credits. So, that was mostly the purpose of, you know, my, my memo, because I just felt like things were getting conflated, and I was kind of getting wrapped around the axle myself.
Could I, could I, um, ask a question?
Can I say something?
Uh, just one moment, please, I have a question for, uh, just, sorry, just one moment. A question for Dennis, uh, on the, on the subject of restoration slash mitigation, uh, where the court is, uh, to be removed. Wouldn't just leaving it alone cause its natural restoration? That, uh, for someone to come in and say, well, I'm going to do a good thing, but I've got to, you know, put lawn here, I think lawn doesn't, in my mind, doesn't really meet, I think, what I would consider to be the definition of a conservation area, but maybe there's a legal thing here, and I could be wrong about that. But getting credit for putting lawn down to get like green back there, that, that would happen naturally, anyway. So, I, I'm not sure whether there, where the credit is there. And actually, I think just letting it, you know, the natural, um, vegetation to, you know, come back would be, would be, would be, uh, a preferable, um, mitigation, so to speak. Now, I'm not sure the mitigation even, that word should even be applied here.
Correct.
Right.
Right, I'm with you on that. And, yeah, I mean, lawn is green pavement. Correct. Right, I'm with you on that. And yeah, I mean, lawn is green pavement, you know, it's kind of how I refer to it. Obviously, it's better than pavement, but, but it's obviously, you know, maybe I shouldn't go this far, but I, I don't see how else that area would be maintained. I mean, you know, that's why, like, when I first saw different seed mixes, but I'm like, yeah, but you're committing to that you're gonna mow it. So I don't, you know, but, but to use a conservation seed mix and then maintain it as, as regular turf cover, as opposed to, well, we'll just cut it twice a year, you know, so that it stays, you know, as a metal community and doesn't, doesn't advance. I mean, yes, that would be a, a, another level. You know, look, obviously, you know, again, I, you know, I got an attorney right here. We're saying Mother Nature basically gave you a backyard, because we saw that the aerial photos for this house was prior to those trees coming down. Now, based on how it's situated in the office, I often refer to this property as the welcome center for, for random farms, because that's now how it kind of looks compared to, you know, what it was prior. So again, if that's the baseline, then fine, you could pull out the court and restore it to, to lawn. Or, or whatever seeding you're going to do, just to stabilize it, and then presumably, because it sits right back there, you know, kind of in the backyard setting, that's how it's gonna be maintained.
I, I. Mr. Graves wanted to speak, I think.
Oh, good.
Yes, thank you. And I appreciate all the comments and what have you. I, I do want to make sure that we're not trying to change what history that took place and what we have done to, would, to. There was a violation. I understand that, and I'm gonna come back to address that. But I don't want to minimize, like, we decided we were gonna clear out things and create a backyard. That is not what happened. Mother Nature created this backyard because we, we lost literally forty white pine trees that were back there. We had to remove them off the house, we had to remove them off the, off the, off the, the fences. We had to, we spent hundreds of thousands of dollars to bring, to bring it back to something that looks like it, in fact, has a mitigation, if you will, between the street and what have you. There is total coverage. I've spent a few hundred thousand dollars on landscaping, putting up twenty-foot and thirty-foot trees to try to restore that. No credit has been even talked about that or discussed in any way, shape, or form. The basketball court, which was a violation, and you guys said it, and I, and I, I don't know the gen, I'm, I'm pointing to the far left. The gentleman who's in the, the left of the three of you there mentioned the last time that he doesn't understand why we're conflating these two issues of the basketball court and the, the deck, and the basketball court being a violation. And said, why can't you just treat these separately and get rid of the basketball court and do what you say you're going to do? Ladies and gentlemen, the basketball court, because I took away from that, I said, you all said, construction had to stop on the deck, and it did. I have removed the basketball court. I have removed the retaining wall. I have removed all of the steps, the, the walkway. There is nothing there now. Absolutely, positively nothing. There is nothing more than trees and grass, and we said we would be prepared to do additional plantings that would, that would rise to the level of whatever you call the, the conservation grasses and other things that had to be put there. I have already gone ahead. There is no basketball court. There is no retaining wall. There is no walkway. There is nothing but trees and the grass. I'm more than happy to put in additional plantings, if in fact, that's what the, the board would like. But I have removed the violation. It is no longer a violation. Now, as relates to the deck, the deck fell down. I said that the last time I was there. There has to be a, a deck has to go up. Otherwise, it's a safety hazard for the family and everything else. Now, granted, when the, the deck was built, it was already out of violation. Now, I understand what the young lady was saying, that they didn't have that in nineteen ninety-two when it was built, and it was put in as law in nineteen ninety-four, but that's not my issue. That's, we were grandfathered, because they, they approved, obviously, the town approved and said, here's the house, and here's the deck. So if you add up that square footage, what was originally approved, what we're asking for is only two hundred, somewhat beyond what was originally approved. So I don't understand, so I, I understand what you're saying, but to, to the degree you said, then we'd have no deck. You just have a house without a deck, and you obviously have to have a deck. If you're, if you're twenty feet up, which we are, from where the, from where the second floor walkway comes out, you have to have a deck. So what we're asking for is the variance of that. If I was in violation of the basketball court, I have removed in its entirety, at great cost to me, the entire basketball court. Basketball court removed, retaining wall removed, the, the, the walkway removed, everything, not a stone is out there. So if we're gonna discuss, the, the only thing we're really discussing at this point, in my view, is the deck. I've removed the violation. And that's what I took away from the gentleman who was to the left. That's what I took away from that hearing, which was, stop the construction on the deck, which we did. No more construction of the deck. The deck is sitting there without a railing, without anything. It is sitting there still in midst of waiting to be constructed or being finished. But we have removed all obstacles as relates to the basketball court, everything, and put plantings, and have spent thousands, in some cases, many thousands of dollars, to bring it back to grasses and trees and what have you. There's, it looks bigger and better than it did to start with.
So if I, if, if I can respond to that, because I think you're referring to me and, or last time we met here with you.
No, not you, not you. The gen, two to your left, two to my left. The gentleman just raised his hand.
How many you, Al?
Yeah, yeah, it's only three of us.
And there's one on each other.
Well, if not the one on the, not the one on the right, then I'm facing the one on the left, the younger gentleman.
There, he said it, younger.
Younger, not, not, not better, not better looking than you. You're better looking, but, but younger.
Alex, I'm good. So it sounds to, do you mind if?
No, please.
So it sounds, first of all, Mr. Graves, that, that was helpful, right? I think, first of all, if that work has been done, removing the basketball court and, and, and the, and the walkway and, and, and the stone wall, you know, that needs to be reflected in our materials, because that's, that's new to us. And it sounds to me, again, I, I, I think the most clearly, when I understand the process and the questions about, in front of us, and they kind of get muddled sometimes, it sounds to me like there are two questions here. One is, an increase in deck size of two hundred and sixty-eight and a half square feet, which will increase the building coverage? Deck counts as building coverage or no?
Yeah, yes, deck counts as building coverage.
Right. So that's one question, although that's not really the question for us, because that goes to the ZBA. The question before us is, is an encroachment of a hundred and forty, fifty, sixty square feet into the conservation easement, correct?
Yep.
And does that, is that something that we are willing to consider? Or is there some kind of mitigation factors associated with what we're willing to consider? It sounds like that's what we need to be discussing. In addition to the document, the, the materials submitted need to be updated per Bob's request and Sabrina's request, and to reflect the actual existing conditions. I mean, those are two separate things, which I'm sure that, that, the, the materials can be updated appropriately. And so I am willing to, absolutely willing to entertain the, the singular question before us, which is, is it an increase of a hundred and sixty-ish square feet into the conservation easement something that we're open to? And if so, in exchange for what?
Exactly, I think.
Correct. And, and that's what, that's what I'm really asking at the end of the day.
Yep.
Yeah.
A deck has, I, I'll go back to, again, nineteen ninety-two, when this house was built. There was all kinds of issues and problems at the time. The builds, half the builders went out of, out of business. The, the, the person who put up the deck, put up the deck wrong twice, the original builder, right? Literally twice. It, it, the, the approval, I mean, I, I won't take you through the nightmare thirty-two years ago, thirty-one years ago, but it was a nightmare. The deck finally would put up, and when the deck they put up, literally rotted and fell down, which was a danger. What we're asking to do is put back the deck appropriately, and to not have it all kinds of catty corner, different shapes and what have you, just to make it rectangle and square. That's it, at the end of the day.
So there are, there are really, there, there are really two attributes to this deck that I can see. One is the structural soundness of it. And you had a problem in the previous construction, that that was just inadequate. So if you, you, and now you have a condition which is dangerous, so you need to put a deck there in order to deal with, with, I guess, the hazard that not having one presents, but also to get the benefit of having a deck. There is nothing that, that, to solve that problem justifies making the deck bigger and having the encroachment. The justification for making the deck bigger than the original footprint is because you, you have a preference for having a bigger deck with a, with a rectangular square geometry and this cascading stair that comes down into the, into the conservation easement. So that, those red areas are the areas that I think, as El Dan has said, those are the red areas that are under, under consideration here. Nobody is saying you shouldn't be allowed to, to build yourself a deck. And the, the, it sounds like the, for, you, you, the way the conversation is going, the suggestion is that we think that you shouldn't be allowed to build a deck, and that's, that's obviously not true.
That's, that's how I, that's how I interpreted when I was listening to the lady saying that we've encroached. There was no other way for me to interpret that, other than to say that the deck is already an encroachment. Well, the deck was an encroachment since nineteen ninety-two. That's what was approved. Yeah, I'm frustrated, because I'm, I'm hearing, I'm hearing something from the young lady that's just not accurate. The, the deck was approved as it was back in nineteen ninety-two. You're now trying to come back and say, I'm gonna grandfather in something that was done in nineteen ninety-four, back to what was nineteen ninety-two. We're entitled to have a deck. Now, if we can argue back and forth on what is the size of the deck and the shape of the deck and what have you, but we, to say there just should be no deck, because it was already an encroachment and the building's too large, what are we gonna do? Tear down the entire house?
No, no, come on, let's, come on, let's, I'm, I'm sorry, but let's, let's just be, have a rational conversation here. Nobody's gonna ask you to do that. I, I, I don't understand, I'm not sure that I agree that because the deck fell down, because it was part of the original approval, that it's not grandfathered anymore, that you would have to go back in and to get approval to rebuild the deck, I would assume that it was grandfathered in, and I would argue in your behalf to say, you know, that's actually grandfathered in. And that deck ought to, they ought to be allowed to put that deck back in. That's my, that's my feeling about that. We have attorneys here. I'm sorry, can I please, can I, can I please finish?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, so that's my interpretation of it. I'm not a, I'm not a, you know, a lawyer, and we have legal counsel here to sort of make sure that, you know, whatever we do here makes sense in that respect. But I want to go back to what I think is the planning board issue here. The planning board issue before us is the encroachment of the design of your, your preferred design of the deck. It's just a preferred design. It's not, it's not necessary for you to enjoy the benefit of your property. It's a preferred architectural design that ends up encroaching in the conservation easement. There could be another design of this deck that doesn't. And so, I, I mean, that's your preference. I have no problem with you stating your preference. But that, I, as far as I'm concerned, that's what we're talking about here.
That's fair. That's fair.
And, and it's, it's a matter of whether we want to grant you, I think I've got this right, we want you to grant you that design preference in the context of our responsibilities for the conservation easement. That, plain and simple, I think, is the question before us.
That's correct. And, and, and the issue, going back to what El Dan said several times, it is not our issue to talk about the overage and the size and the square footage. That is for the ZBA, that's for your next step. But it really comes down to the seventy-four, the seventy-fourth conservation easement and the incur, the incursion in there. So one of the issues that comes up is, while obviously you've designed it this way as a preferred design, is there anything preventing you from putting the stairs at one of the ends of the deck, as opposed to in the middle of the deck? And therefore, you're going to have maybe, you know, forty feet of impact instead of two sixty and a hundred and sixty. Obviously, it's, it's a question that you, you don't have to answer now, and you can talk to your client about that. But there might be designs, what Tom, I think, is trying to say, is there are design alternatives that might resolve most of, if not all of, the issue altogether. We understand this is the preferred, but maybe there's a one that's really close to the preferred, that really will be as good. And I, I think we would be happy to work with you on that and, and get this done.
The, the answer to your question is a simple yes. All we would have to do, if.
I have another thought.
You need to speak into the microphone.
Dick, you had a thought?
Yeah, I'm rethinking what I said earlier. The, the, the line we're talking about, do we have any way that we could change that line?
Which one?
And, you know, in essence, the, the applicant has said, well, he's put a lot of extra vegetation, not just where the trees fell down, but in other places. And if there's a, a way to make the conservation bigger, and maybe go two for one, if you can, if you want a hundred and sixty-eight, then we need three hundred and twenty, whatever. You know, a two to one, something like that, to say, okay, you can deliver it as long as the ZBA says, there's nothing wrong with it.
Are you talking about the trade-off between doing more planting as opposed, and in exchange for getting the approved size of that? Don't you say?
I think he's also saying, maybe, is it possible legally to change the buffer line at this point, right there? And I don't, I don't know how that.
It was established, I'm assuming, way back when.
Way back.
Yeah. I, I, that would be.
That would be a disaster.
Well, it'd be a disaster, it might be a, a legal, sort of.
It might be a, a really big.
My favorite one. We don't wanna, we don't wanna.
But I mean, if, if, again, we know that you have to come back for some of these, the documents, so.
Yeah, but wait a minute, let me stop you right there.
Okay.
What we just, what Mr. Graves just said is that he has eliminated the, the.
Yeah, but it's gotta be shown on a plan now.
It is shown on a plan. It has been removed.
Can I, can I just cut to the chase real quick? Because, you know, we're kind of going back a little bit, and I hear what the applicant's saying, it raises a valid point. For the record, no one says that you can't get a deck. All we're saying tonight is, I understand from the applicant that all this stuff has been removed, but what I'm seeing are architectural plans, again, not, not a survey with the information of existing conditions. All I want to know as the attorney, what's there, what's been removed, so that this board has something they can look at and say, okay, we're only talking about X amount of percentage in that conservation. Should they want to do that? That's their issue. And then for zoning, when you're ready to go there, I have exactly what metrics we're looking at in terms of what kind of variances. I'm gonna be sitting at that board as well, what those metrics are, so that when we're looking at the variance request, we know what it is. And so that's all we're asking for. And I, I just think, again, I think it was Bob Seole who said earlier, I think a survey or something, just to show it all in one spot, that we can look at and all objectively look at it to make that determination. Right now, you're saying that this was, well, the applicant has said all this was removed. We're still showing it on the plans.
That's, that's where I get confused, showing everything all in one place. What is purpose of that drawing, if not doing exactly what you say?
That's not a survey. It's an architectural rendering. It's a little different.
It's a cyclone done by civil engineer.
Can we, this is, we are not gonna resolve this.
I'm happy to sit with you and with Bob, again, to do this, but it's, again, from, from my standpoint, that's not what I'm looking for. What I'm looking for is, I need to exactly see what the metrics are, and that's, it's not really it, is what I'm saying to you.
So I, I'd like to just.
Wonder if I could say, may I chime in?
Sure, of course, yes.
Am I on?
Yeah, who are you? You have to identify, identify yourself.
Yeah, I'd be happy to. My name's Paul Janik. I was here for, for Earl. I was the wetlands consultant, and it's been a. And, uh, it's been a, uh, a very interesting discussion tonight. One comment I would have right off the bat, I think the item that Bob Cioli brought up about it having a complete plan that's got, you know, the I's dotted, the T's crossed, is absolutely on the mark. Uh, why bother? Otherwise, you're operating in great. So, you know, just get it done. I think the applicant's perfectly willing to do it. Uh, I, he was probably under the impression that he had done it, but it seems like we're almost to the goalpost. But that being said, there's been a lot of discussion about the, uh, and the reason why I'd like to talk is a lot of discussion about the, the buffer area. The sacred buffer area. And I remember at the last meeting, I, I kind of was a-asking, uh, town council about, you know, what exactly could you do and could not do on it? And, uh, I got one or two word answers, but nothing I could really sink my teeth into. Uh, Bob's office was nice enough to prepare a, uh, in his response letter for this next meeting, th- this meeting, uh, two attachments. Uh, I received them Monday. I've been out in the field all day long, mapping wetlands, so I apologize if it's a little late in the day. But I took the time to take the second attachment that Bob had, which is the Random Farms um, subdivision plat paired by, uh, I believe Harold, probably Harold Campbell. Uh, God rest his soul. Uh, and if you could just bear with me, I'd like to just show you, put this on the screen. And what I did was, is I took the, uh, can you all see it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this is the, uh, the plat of, uh, Random Farms, prepared nineteen ninety-two or somewhere around there. And just for reference, I'd like to just walk you through this. Uh, do I have a pointer? Am I pointing right now?
Yeah, we can see it.
Yeah. Good, great. So I've got a little arrow there with Earl Graves', uh, property on it, just for reference. And, uh, you can see Route one thirty-three, and on the, the north arrow is straight up. And on the, on the east side or the right side of this, this plat is, uh, Hog Hill Road for reference. And on the left side or the southwest corner of this plat, you can see, uh, Whitlaw Lane for reference. So you guys probably know all this area pretty well. What I've done is, is I, 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 I put a red line. I highlighted along the back property lines of the properties that are but uh, Whitlaw, one thirty-three, and Hog Hill. And on that plat, it shows this buffer area that we're all talking about all the time. And what I did was, is I overlaid the, the map, the tax maps, uh, with the, uh, Westchester County Planning Aerial photos. Two thousand twenty-one is the publication date of those photos. And on that, you, you have a menu where you can actually take the, uh, a, a property line and me- measure distance perpendicular to that back property line. And what I did was, is I did a little exercise here. I went on all those properties that are in that buffer area, including Earl's. And I was clearly able to see on it the backyard limits, where they were. And I took from the back property line, and I measured normal to the back property line of each one of those properties that I've just shown on here, um, to where the edge of the lawn was. And I wrote on that in red, as you see, each one of those property lines, the distance from the property line back up to where the lawn was. And just to get to the chase, I shaded in yellow all of the properties where encroachment of lawn is well within this quote buffer area. This is two thousand twenty-one, God's lawn area. And, you know, this isn't exactly surveying, but it's, it's not bad. And just to walk you through it, I'm gonna go from left to right across here, and I'm just gonna read out the numbers of the yellow shaded properties where people, residents living there now have a lawn area that encroaches into the buffer area. And the number that I'm gonna call out is the distance from the back property line to that lawn area. So the first one going from left to right is twenty-two feet. The next one that's encroaching is forty-nine feet. The next one is sixty feet. The next one is fifty-nine. And the next one, which is right at the bend in the road where one thirty-three and Whitlaw is, is thirty-five feet. Now, we're gonna head along, uh, to the right on Route one thirty-three. This next guy is twenty-four feet. His lawn encroaches, excuse me, his, his lawn is from, to the back property line. The next guy is Earl. Earl's, I've got about twenty feet. The next guy, his next door neighbor is seventeen feet. His lawn encroaches, all right? The next guy up and the last one is twenty-five feet. So all of those lots back there, I've counted nine properties where the back yards have encroached in some cases, a-almost twenty feet to the back property lines in, in the buffer area. So I have to ask myself, if this is so bloody sacred, the town is either A, looking the other way, or has no power of enforcement on, on maintaining this, and has never bothered to. Because this is a bad batting average, in my opinion. Now, I cannot speak for any of these property owners, what they did or did not do, uh, the circumstances, but I'm just telling you what I saw on the two thousand twenty-one aerial photos. And I think it's rather interesting, and I do think it is relevant in, to Mr. Graves' situation. He's not alone here. I assure you, so one guy, neighbors seventeen feet. All right, left between the back of his l- lawn and the back property lawn. These are all substantial encroachments, and I think it's something that you should take into account. And that's it.
Okay, thank you. So that actually begs the question, why should we have, why should we have any restrictions? Why not, why should those numbers, those numbers might just as well be zero? I mean, those numbers might as well be lawn all the way up to the property line.
Well, I don't.
I'm sorry, let me, let me, I'm sorry, just let me, if your suggestion is that, that there is no enforcement power, uh, or and/or there is no enforcement, um, desire, uh, and I guess your suggestion is that we really don't need the protections.
That isn't my suggestion at all.
Okay, so what is your suggestion?
I'm, I, I'm just saying that in Random Farms, whatever was established was not well established. I mean, it's oftentimes when people put conservation areas or any kind of thing in many towns, they have some physical feature that's there that you can demarcate it, uh, it, from, from when the, when you start the clock. You never, I mean, i- in reality, you can't go onto people's property and police, that, that, I understand that. But the fact of the matter is, I look, I look at the maps here that were done in, in nineteen ninety-two, and yes, there's a line on here, but there's nothing there demarcating it physically and out in the site that you could come out to later and check on.
But the difference, the difference between those neighbors and, and, and the applicant before us is the applicant is before us. And if those other neighbors were before us, we'd ask the same question of them.
Yeah, but, but, but I think it's relevant.
Are, are also, um, in violation of, of, uh, of, of a town rule. You know, I, I don't know.
Absolutely, but, but I think it's.
Sounds like the logic might be. Right? Everyone else is staying up late, why can't I?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, look at the neighborhood, though. Obviously, the town has not done a good job of enforcement of this area.
Okay, so that's fine, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Very obvious.
Okay, that, uh, everything you said is true. I don't see that as being dispositive to the question in front of us. It has nothing to do with the question in front of us, I think. I think that you raise a very good point about the enforcement of, you know, these kinds of things that we have, regulations and, and codes and so on, that, uh, maybe your, your comment doesn't go to us, it goes to the town board. They are the people who enforce these things. We're presented with this particular situation right now in front of us and trying to figure out what to do. I will tell you that when we do, uh, green, clean, clearing and grading limit lines, we actually habitually require that monuments be put in the ground to demarcate those, that line for the current property owner and future property owners. Clearly, that wasn't done here, and maybe it should be as something that is, is done, uh, now, or is done in the future. I got it. None of that actually helps us, as far as I'm concerned, with the question before us. I think the question before us, to me, I don't, I, I would like to try and advance the, the real issue here, which I don't think is a clarion and grading limit line yet. I don't really s- understand that yet, because I, I don't have a drawing that helps me understand that. But the encroachment into the conservation area, I think that we, I don't think that I need any more documentation to understand that. And I'm not saying that we should vote on that now, but, because we don't have the documentation that allows us to vote on that. But I just wonder if it's not, uh, if, if this is something we can just discuss and give the applicant, you know, uh, uh, maybe some guidelines or direction here. I wonder if the, if there shouldn't be some consideration A to the history, uh, but more importantly, not just the history of the property, but the history of the applicant's energies in doing what he can to restore the property, to provide, um, um, the, um, you know, the, the landscaping, um, to, uh, the, the amount of, uh, the amount of money isn't, is, is considerable. But the, the improvements that actually have happened here as a result of that, and all done in good faith, all done in good faith, as far as I can tell. That there should be some consideration for that for, in his, the, the, the length of his property, which is more apparent there, that actually is in the conservation area. The encroachment against that map there, and from what I can understand of, of the drawing here, is really kind of de minimis to me. I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I think that it could be designed around pretty easily, but, um, and there isn't any hardship, um, argument here that the applicant can bring, but rather a, a desire, a preference to better enjoy, enjoy his, his property. And in light of, of his history and contributions, I, I, I wonder if we can't be a little bit, I don't know, the right word is generous or accommodating in this particular case.
You are in a public hearing.
Yep.
I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna be a dead horse here, but, but it's interesting. Um, at our last meeting, we discussed this kind of a thing. And we both asked the question, what is it that we are allowed and not allowed to do? And you answered, nothing. You said you can't do anything. So it was interesting, that night when I went to bed and staring up the ceiling, and it was, so, wait a minute, he said, you can't do anything, should do nothing. So an act of God occurs, well, the nature wants that, wants that, that property to not have trees on it anymore. That's what the nature of it is. Why are you looking at me funny?
Well, I don't, I don't know where you're going with this.
Well, I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that it, it doesn't seem to make any sense as to why we're going through all of this. When, in point of fact, if we didn't have to do anything, because that's what the town is saying, is saying it to us, why are we going through all of this?
The town is not saying that you don't have to do anything.
If I may.
Because there is a law that says that you can't do anything, you can't do this without the discretion, approval, discretionary approval of this board. There is a law, you can't do it.
If I may just redirect here a moment, Mr. Curly had, had offered up something. I would like to hear from the rest of the planning board to see if we could get you out of this stalemate that we seem to be in tonight. Okay? So, 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 Mr. Tiscano, if you could let the board discuss this and not interject, because I think that we are, you know, to hear where the other two members sit, and then where Mr. Brown now sits, I think it might be very helpful to move you to the next step to finalize this. Mr. Chairman?
I was just throwing that in as an aside.
I, I understand that.
But, but.
I would very much like. I would very much like to hear the other two board members, because I think that would use, this suggests it was fair. And I, and I wanna, I wanna make sure that, just at this, the spirit of this. At the end of the day, the spirit of this was, I was trying to restore back and put back trees that were very large trees that fell down. Hundred-foot trees that fell down across everything. I've spent literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in the backyard to put those things in over these thirty years. This was not something that I was trying to do to, to, uh, enrich myself in some way, shape, or form, or to do something that was outside of, it had nothing to do with it. I was only doing this in the spirit of trying to bring, to make it look like it did before. That's all. And now, if in fact, I, we have done something that, what, what we're asking for is some grace here and some consideration for what it is that we haven't back done, to try to make things right. And so, yes, I, as the young lady said, I would love to hear what the other two, uh, board members feel. I appreciate what it is that you have said.
There are three, three, three opinions.
Yes. Yes, um, uh, Tom, I agree with you. And, um, it's, it's a little bit what I was trying to get at, uh, I don't know, twenty, thirty minutes ago, that, uh, the question before us is a one hundred and sixty-foot encroachment into the conservation easement. Uh, Tommy, you used the, uh, phrase de minimis, and, um, it's a phrase, right? It's not a word?
It's actually Latin, but I don't speak Latin, so I.
No, but it's two words. Uh, right?
No, it's one word.
It's like genus and species, it's one word.
One word.
It's de minimis.
Took a lot.
Okay, well, we can get back to it.
I'll Google it while you're talking.
Well, hang on that during the minutes.
You use the, uh, word or phrase de minimis, and I, I agree, we're talking about a hundred and sixty square feet. Um, really, there's two, there's two, uh, there, there are two questions here. Is there a potential redesign of the deck so, so as to minimize, uh, what goes into the conservation easement? Or is, you know, uh, what, what Dick was suggesting, is, is there some kind of mitigation for the hu- hundred and sixty square feet into the conservation easement? Um, I, I understand the history here, I think there's some relevance to the history. Um, a- and I completely agree that, uh, it sounds like all the work that was done was in good faith. Um, I am not afraid of, I, I don't, I, I completely understand the desire for a rectangular geometry of a deck and, um, and a beautification of one's home. Um, a hundred and sixty square feet into the conservation easement does not scare me, um, if we feel there is some sort of, uh, offset for it. Um, and perhaps the work that was already done is sufficient offset. Um, I'm, I'm open to that, um, point of view.
Okay, Dick, boss?
That sounds true.
As long as it doesn't fall down.
I admire your brevity.
Well, I, 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 I've. The issue, uh, also, it's not so much the square footage, as when you look at the actual incursion, because the square footage is, is more of the ZBA issue. The actual incursion, if, if you look at the actual distance, it's perhaps, you know, on the corners, ten feet? Maybe? Uh, and then the, the staircase, uh, that's being proposed is perhaps seven feet. Um, so again, uh, not only is the square footage de minimis, but I think the actual, what we're talking about is distance. You know, from the backyard to the, the, the set off point. And we've never known, really been known much for our grace or consideration, but, um, we, we can make an exception, I think, and I think this would be an appropriate time to do it. And I think we can, and I, Dick, I think Dick raises this issue an awful lot. I think we can also delineate this application and this approval based on the information that we have in terms of the history and all of the, uh, information that Mr. Graves has supplied us with all the work that he has done. So, um, I, again, we need to, uh, what we can do is continue the public hearing, have you get the materials to us so we have that information. But relying on, on you getting that to us, we can also ask staff to draw up a resolution so that, uh, you're, you're done, uh, next time. Provided you have your meeting with Bob, understand what Bob needs and what Sabrina needs, and, um, get this thing finished.
So, um, yeah, and so, uh, I mean, we need to be sure we get the right warehouses in this thing.
Yes.
To justify this.
I, I agree.
But I think we have plenty of them.
I do too.
In the discussion we've had. And for, uh, Mr. Graves, I'm sorry that, I mean, this is taking a long time, and it took a, quite a while to get to, I think, what is really sort of our decision, um, um, where we, uh, actually have a decision to make here. And the reason it took that long to get there is, is it just an awful lot of confusion about the documentation, about what's where and why, and, and disagreements about all that. I would, I would really ask you to be certain that the next time, because we're not, I don't think we're gonna close the public hearing tonight, the next time you come, that we have Sabrina, and we have Dennis, and we have Bob Cioli all on board with your documentation, to be sure that it's in place, so we don't have to. so we don't have to have this kind of a conversation over again.
So this is a public hearing, are, are there any members of the public for this, uh, application?
Can I ask just one clarifying question? So for the next submission, is the planning board looking to have the sports court on this submission? Or do you want to make like it just?
Gone.
Good, okay.
We need a current survey.
Right.
Of what's there today. How about that? Okay, and then kind of get that survey all.
Sidewalk on, the wall.
Everything that's, that's been removed, rem, it's not on that survey.
The spirit of Mr. Nesbitt.
It's not gonna come up again.
Correct.
Yes, it's, it's.
Correct, update your application materials.
So we'll continue.
We need to continue it to a date.
Yes, Alicia, what does it look like, in terms of, uh, dates for getting submissions in?
So the next submission deadline is October thirtieth or November twenty-first.
October the what?
Thirtieth.
I can try.
Okay, uh, the one after that.
We need, while we need to move past trying, this, what they're asking for is very simple, was, is one document, I'm as confused as you all are, right? I've been, we've been dealing with this since February. This is not complicated, they're asking for one document which seems more than reasonable that gives, outlines everything, take a hundred photos of every single thing, all the plantings, all the trees, everything that has been done, so that it could be clear in the next hearing, what action, what the, just give them exactly what they're asking for.
So, so Mr. Graves, Graves, if you will, have a conversation with your professionals, I will advise the board to schedule, to continue the public hearing to November twenty-first. The submission deadline is October thirtieth.
Okay, we will have something. Thank you, we'll have something to you by October thirty.
Can I say something to, uh, Sabrina and Mr. Graves? I'd like to sit down with your surveyor, and I think the surveyor would be the best gentleman to provide a map which shows everything, the clarity grading, the buffer, what's there, what's not there, all the coverage, and I think that would be the one map that we can probably use to memorialize everything.
And I would add that, to be specific about how much new stuff has been added above and beyond, you know, after the hurricane knocked down everything, and that was replanted, and I end, I think I understood that other, another area was planted he- more heavily. So, that would help me.
Well, would you want, would you want like the edge of that planting or the individual plants? In other words, the edge of the lawn, is that what you'd like to see on there?
For Dennis?
That'd be productive for Dennis on that.
So.
Right.
I mean, that would be more productive from.
Sure, and I, 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 I did make a statement, um, you know, in, in support of, I did say the applicant has since added evergreen trees to the perimeter of the property in part to supplement the botanical losses incurred, and that was in reference to the hurricane. So, if you wanna, you know, sort of document what Mr. Graves was saying, that over time, you know, we've kind of just did, um, you know, a switcheroo, so to speak, like, you know, we, the net loss is not a net loss, it's just that things have been relocated. I think maybe that kind of just checks the box and makes everything go away.
Paul, the drawing that you submitted, can you hear me, Paul? Paul, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can, are you talking to me, Wally?
Yeah, the drawing that, that I have here is the site plan that you proposed, and on it, you showed all of the existing.
Can we, can we just, I mean, if you guys are talking to each other.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, I.
Outside, outside of the, outside of the.
Yeah, we, we can do that off camera, yeah, that's, I don't want to waste the board's time.
You know, why don't, why don't Dennis, I, you and I in the survey meet, Paul, so we get all on the same page?
Yeah, I think that's.
You don't need to waste, you don't need to waste everyone's time here.
Absolutely.
Preaching to the choir.
So it's on the twenty-first of, uh, November and, uh, material on October thirty.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we move to our next item, this is an informal.
Thank you.
This is the, uh, Buck Capital. One oh one five Hartsdale Road. This is an application for a site development plan approval, wetland permit, tree removal permit, stormwater management and erosion and sedimentation control for construction of a single-family residence.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and staff. Do you want to wait for Sabrina, and then now wait for Dennis, or?
Did she go into the meetings? I know, she, she's right there, I see her, she's right on time.
I think you want to confirm that de minimis is two words.
It is.
I, we confirmed.
Okay, two words, good, thank you.
We'll wait for you.
Really? Sorry.
That's a first.
That is a first, I'm so shocked, you guys are being nice to me tonight.
Well, he's such a gentleman.
You think I'm gonna make a difference here?
Once we get the alternatives, absolutely.
Right, before you start, just real quick on the, on the prior application, I'm not sure, because I know procedurally, have you, did you make the motion, because I was not here to, to.
Continue it, yes, yes.
You did?
No, we, we didn't make a motion to continue, we just continued the.
We should have made a motion.
Make the motion to continue at some point.
We were supposed to make a motion to continue, but we didn't.
Okay. They were really worn down by the applicant. So if you could just make that motion, just, so continue that public hearing prior for the, for the, uh. November twenty-first, yeah. Yep. We might want to make that motion, and, uh, and combine it with the direction to staff to draw up a, uh, graph with the resolution.
Motion.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 We do our best work when the applicants leave. Thank you.
So good evening, for the record, Brad Schwartz from Zaren Steinmetz, on behalf of Buck Capital, the, um, owner of eleven, uh, one zero one five ten fifteen Hartsdale Road. Um, just to introduce the team, um, Douglas DeBoer, the site owner, his development partner and architect, Reja Bach, Pete Gregory, who you know, the project engineer. On the screen is Steve Coleman, our wetland consultant, and my associate, Japhin Cohen, who's been assisting me, um, on this application. So, for the sake of brevity, I'm gonna cut short my planned opening. Douglas DeBoer, again, the owner, wanted to say some opening remarks, I mean, just circling behind him, just to sort of fill in the gap, but I'm gonna hand the mic right to Douglas, and let's get this thing going.
Bring it down to short people height. That one? All right, good evening. Yeah, Douglas DeBoer, I'm, I'm the, uh, owner of, uh, one zero one five Hartsdale Road. I am an individual, I'm, I'm not a large corporation. I purchased the property from Reja Bach, um, and purchased that in March of two thousand and twenty-one. Reja actually purchased that property in two thousand and nine. Um, we are partners, we're friends, and so he's helping me with the architecture and the design of the, of the property. Um, the goal of the property, um, is to build a home for my family of four, so that my two children, who are currently twelve and nine, can attend Chapakla School District for high school. A side note, um, I live in New Jersey, um, close to my in-laws, you know, they, they, um, they have a, uh, an illness, an illness recently, so, um, we are designing it either for my family to, to move in, or so that I can make a, um, modest return if we are unable to relocate from New Jersey. And for my family, we would need at least a three-bedroom. Um, and quite frankly, for any family that would be there, I think we're all aware of how good the, the school district is here, and any family would, would, would really need a bare minimum of three bedrooms. The goal is to create something that is reasonable, and something that is really done in a, in a responsible way. And that's very important to me, and that's why I've asked, um, some of Peter Gregory and Steve Coleman, not to make a mansion, but to make something that is consistent with, with the area. Now, before we purchased the property, we, we did speak with the lawyer, he does, the, the property clearly has wetland constraints on it. The current structure has four bedrooms. We purchased the, the property from the previous owner, who was the tenant at that time, and that's our, was us, our grandfather in, to be able to, uh, build on, on that site. In addition, since the septic, the current structure septic runs into the wetlands, if we were to be able to move the property up the hill and the septic up the hill, we would dramatically reduce the impact to the wetlands. I guess finally, the current structure, and you'll see in the picture, is really inches away from Hartsdale Road, and it's actually on, on a, on a curve, so it definitely is a, a, um, hazard in the current location. We've been in the planning stages for about a year now, and, you know, understandably, the, the town wanted us to speak with the, uh, DOH first. And, and I'll be open, we've been disheartened with, and, and disheartened with, um, the Department of Health, their delays and kind of unwillingness to, to speak. Uh, we also opened up a dialogue with the DEC, and, um, they've been much more responsive, and, and they, frankly, I think, really liked the proposal, the proposal. And, um, that's why I think the DEC reached out to the DOH, um, and respond, and that's, went after that discussion, is when the DOH finally said, hey, you know, we, we would be able to, we'd be open to considering the application after local approval. It's, on a side note, it's my understanding that, that reached out from the DEC to the, the Department of He- of Health is actually quite, um, unprecedented for, for this kind of product, and I think that just gives, um, credence to the support that they have of the application. We have conducted a, a number of, um, kind of staff meetings, and we've gone through multiple versions of, of the plan, and you'll, you'll see those today. So we're now, um, at the point where we can bring it to the, uh, planning board for discussion and review, and I look forward to discussing the property and the plans together today. And really, would like to work with the board, um, and staff to come up with a three-bedroom plan that makes sense, uh, the most sense to the property.
Okay, thank you. So Peter and Stephen will walk the board through the site plan.
I did speak to Lino earlier this morning, Lino, welcome to Newcastle.
Thank you, Brad.
Um, and, and Lino mentioned to me, and, look, we know it too, right, your board and staff are gonna want to see different alternatives that we've looked at for this proposal. In your submission is an alternative analysis with a chart that compares and contrasts the impacts from five different alternatives. I want you to know that even those five alternatives themselves evolved from prior iterations of the project, right? Th- this group has for the past year been examining different layouts and, 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 um, proposals for the site. So we've come to you, have a preferred alternative, and we showed you four other alternatives. We'll get to that towards the end of our presentation, hopefully it's in about ten minutes or so, and not in an hour and a half. So Peter, if you want to get going.
Uh, good evening, Peter Gregory with DTS Proton Design Engineering from White Plains. So, uh, as I was mentioning, uh, the property, ten fifteen Hartsdale Road, is approximately one point five acres in size, and it's located in the R one A zoning district. The property is located on the eastern side of Hartsdale Road. And, oh, is that, is that where it's in there?
Yeah.
Oh, great.
Thank you.
What is it?
This is ten fifteen Hartsdale Road. It's located on the eastern side of Hartsdale Road, and it's south of Campfire, which is a little bit off of our screen there, and then Deep Woods Drive is right here, we're about three hundred feet south of that, located just at the entrance access to the Chapakla Swimming and Tennis Club. Uh, to our south is Turner Swamp, which is a New York State DEC-regulated wetland.
Peter, before you move, are you moving up this slide?
Yeah.
I just want to point out, kind of, so here's the Chapakla Swimmin' Tennis Club. This is the right-of-way off, off Hartsdale leading to the club. This is also the right-of-way off which our, Douglas's new driveway would be proposed. I've submitted to your board, um, the prior deed that has the easement right contained within it that allows the access off of that right-of-way. There's one dimension, our access would not be off Hartsdale, it would be off of this right-of-way.
Is the access with that, uh, easement limited only to vehicular or pedestrian access? So it would not permit, uh, access to, uh, public water to be placed into the easement?
So, great question. It doesn't expressly provide for utility rights. There is some case law that, um, stands for the proposition that you could read into an easement, anything that would be reasonable to make use of that easement. So to the extent that the easement language allows for ingress and egress over the right-of-way to access a single-family residential property, um, it's possible that we could make an argument that we have the right to install utility lines, but in all candor, the easement language does not expressly provide.
Well, I, I wouldn't start out that way with your neighbor, but perhaps you could talk to the neighbor and see whether or not, uh, that access might be granted.
Correct.
Uh, because obviously, as we get further on here, that would be preferred with, uh, compared to the water access that you proposed. Okay.
So as was mentioned.
And by the way, just to, it's our understanding, right, that the other neighbors who also access off that right-of-way, their utilities are in that right-of-way, so i- if we were to talk to the club at, at that point, we, we do nothing different than what we think the other residences are, are already doing.
Right, so the, as far as you know, the, the infrastructure in that right-of-way serving the tennis club is, has the capacity to be able to tie into?
I'll defer to Peter on the capacity question.
Well, all of those individual service connections are coming off of the existing water main in Hartsdale Road, and this, the current building also has its service connection from that same main, so I would say, yes, it probably does have the adequate capacity for that side. Just to mention that, you know, we'll talk about it quickly, but, you know, this is the, this is ten fifteen, the house, the existing home, right off of the roadway, located almost in the center of property. The property does contain, obviously, the stream that flows in the soulier direction. There's also a drain area for a wetland that comes beneath that access driveway. And, um, what I want to mention is that running beneath the driveway is a thirty or thirty-six-inch stormwater drainage culvert, which is kind of obstructing the ability to properly bring those service connections into the properties. There isn't sufficient cover over the top of the pipe, and I don't know if it's feasible not to bring those service connections beneath that drain line. So that's something that would have to be studied, uh, in that area.
But you're saying that the culvert is underneath the access drive right now?
This is, yes, there's a drainage culvert that runs in that.
But we have utilities there, so somehow that issue has been taken care of. And if it's already there, you might not have to contend with that at all, you could just have the, you know, your connection for a long.
Connections running from Hartsdale Road into the, there are three, there's, uh, there are three sites currently that's there. There's an existing home here, there's a second one behind it, the club, and then there's a small, um, they're referring to it as a bungalow at ten seventeen Hartsdale Road, which is adjacent east of our property.
So could you point out where the culvert is?
Culvert is right through here.
So it must outfall on the site.
It does, it discharges right along the front of our property, it flows toward the existing home, and this foundation in the, in the dwelling is subject to flooding. That water, during even smaller storm events, has been known to breach a burn that's through here, and it flows through the house and comes out.
Hence the delineation on one of your drawings, that area as being a wetland.
Yes, I can show that in my next slide. This is just an example of the, the home being close to the road.
Yeah.
Two different locations. Back of the house, and this is our constraints map. So what we're looking at here is the water course flowing in the soulier direction through here into the state-regulated wetlands, Turner Swamp, further down here. But there's also another wetland, small wetland up here, a pocket that's draining beneath the driveway and tying in. There is the drain culvert located right at the entrance, and what we've observed at the site is that there is what appears to be, um, I don't know, some meter pit? And we have, we have observed water services running through the drain line and up individually to the different properties. So something has been done over the years, we're not sure, something we have to work on.
Just don't know what led to that installation, that's all.
This drawing is representing our state-regulated wetlands down at the southern portion of the property, a hundred-foot buffer to that area. This has been designated as town-regulated wetland, it's hundred-foot setback is located here. This is the only portion of the property that's located outside of Buck, up in this area here. Existing water service comes into the, to the main, the current home in this area, and this area here, this entire location, is where we've observed the existing septic system today. Uh, we've done some preliminary testing in that area, from elevated levels of groundwater, really not suitable for replacing the septic in that area. And that's one of the, the, the issues that had led us to find alternate areas on the property for the septic.
Sabrina, have we heard from Tom yet in terms of the determination of where the front yard is, or how many front yards there might be?
No, we, we, he, he was in a couple of the meetings, but he hasn't come back with formal determination yet.
Okay, it could be really.
He will.
Yeah, it's pretty critically important, of course.
Sabrina, did, was he gonna make that determination, or I thought the feedback was that I should talk to Jennifer about it? Is he doing that on his own, or do you want us to get involved as, as legal? Is he doing that on his own or do you want us to get involved as legal?
Um, I think that, let me have a conversation with him and we'll make that determination.
For what it's worth, why interpretation? What? No, no, we're nothing, huh? The right-of-way doesn't classify as a street under the coast?
Tom's going to have an issue with that.
I get that, and practically, I don't care, right? Because whether it's a corner lot or not, we need a variance, so it's going to affect the extent of the variance, but I don't think this application is going to rise or fall on whether we need a larger variance or a smaller variance. So, so let's move past that.
Yeah, okay, fair enough. Well, the only issue, I think, is, from my perspective.
Go ahead.
Is there's very limited dry area here. And it's being used right now with a proposed driveway turnaround. And the issue is how close can we get to the side yard and moving stuff further out of the buffer? So that, that's why it is relevant. It might be that you need a really substantial variance if we can, if the club doesn't, you know, obviously object when you go to the ZVA, et cetera. That could really make a difference in terms of trying to use the dry spot a little bit more, shall we say?
Purposeful.
Yeah, purposefully, good, I like that.
And that would be a classic example of where really such, or more substantial variance would actually result in a greater environmental benefit.
Of course.
So I'll be happy to take that case to the zoning board. As I was saying, I think the classification will just hopefully determine on how much of an variance we need.
Right.
Let's come up with the best plan for the site and then we'll give a report in there from the ZVA.
I would say that the best plan of the site is going to anticipate some of those kinds of movements.
Yeah.
And what we want to do is, if we get to that point, is support your application to the ZVA with our findings.
Yeah.
And this is, this is the layout of our preferred plan, based on all of the alternatives that were studied, our discussions with staff. This is the location that we've selected for the home, access off of the club's driveway. But what really had determined its location was our soil testing. We had met with town staff, engineering, to look at soil test holes. We've met with the Westchester County Health Department at the site. And really what we found are two viable areas. One area right here for the septic system, which would support a primary and reserve area. And that's limited based on our topography, depth to ledge rock, and also trying to maximize our distance away from that wetland line. The other area that we found was suitable was in the front, we found a usable soil here for a stormwater infiltration system in the front. The area located to the east is ledge rock and we've encountered ledge rock on the remaining front of the property and on this to the rear of the site. The area that's over here, we have some usable soil that we are now considering for stormwater irrigation in the form of rain gardens. So the idea on this plan would be to capture the stormwater runoff from our driveway, move that through our infiltration system, as well as taking the roots and reed most through our rain gardens prior to discharging on the site. Now, I'm jumping around a bit, but in terms of our septic, we are within 100 feet to the regulated, state-regulated wetlands or any wetlands in this area here. Health department's going to require the issuance of a waiver for relief of that 100-foot separation distance. We are going to be going to the health department with the request for the waiver, but as a form of mitigation for the treatment of the effluent, we're proposing that enhanced treatment unit be installed to pre-treat that effluent prior to it being discharged into the ground.
So this is not like a typical septic system? I learned a lot of this application, so can you describe what this enhanced unit treatment is all about?
It's a mechanical system, it's an aerobic process. We're introducing or injecting air to promote aerobic bacterial growth and a filtering system prior to discharging into the soil. So in essence, what's occurring here is the treatment is taking place in a tank at the foundation. It's not relying on the soil that's within the buffer to provide the treatment. In addition to that, we're also proposing that the discharge occur in a sand filter system. It's an alternate system, it is permitted by the health department. The enhanced treatment unit is a permitted treatment in this area. So we would get our pretreatment through our enhanced treatment area, discharge through a sand filter, we're getting another layer of tertiary treatment prior to it going into the ground. And that's the basis for the request for mitigation from the county health department. Being that this is the only location for the septic and the location for the stormwater in the front, we do not have the ability to push the house further to the east. We're limited with our setback to our foundation, to our septic and our stormwater system. We have, from previous plans, we prepared, shortened the length of our house from what was originally was 88 feet down to 77 feet, which was one of the alternatives. And that kind of eliminated or reduced some of the disturbance on what would be the western, between, western side of the house, between the house and Hardscrabble Road.
And Peter, with that extra 11 feet, where are now two rain gardens?
That's correct. So by pulling this up, we were now able to introduce the rain garden treatment practices here and pick up, you know, maintaining some additional area here that can remain intact, which will also be part of an area for mitigation that Steve can discuss when we get to that slide. We've also reduced the amount of the backyard. We, originally, we had the rear yard extending to have a more useful backyard, getting closer to the wetland line. As a result of our meeting with staff, we've pulled that up. We've provided a boulder placement of landscape boulders in this area to limit the extent of the regressing and we can preserve a number of trees that are down in this area. We're also expecting the health department will allow us not to develop the reserve area. We do have access to the septic system in the future and I think that we would be able to avoid placing fill on the area. There's going to be a fill requirement on the system. And in doing so, we can minimize disturbance downhill and preserve a couple of large trees that are in that area.
Yeah, Steve here, I just wanted to point out also on the site plan, you know, we show a temporary utility crossing, you know, coming up and if we can use the access from Chappaqua Swim and Tennis, you know, that would be eliminated too, so we would eliminate any direct wetland impact.
That is the only wetland impact that we have and that would be temporary for that crossing. One other thing that we did reduce, the original plan that we had proposed or we had presented, showed a retaining wall, originally we had shown to keep this building up as far away from the wetlands as possible. We had shown this little portion of the drainage outage being piped, filled in, that allowed us to slide the house further forward. I think in our initial conversation, that really wasn't going to be something that would be considered. So we had then pulled it back and we are now, we've, I guess, relocated our driveway and parking area to the opposite side. It's now in the, out of the buffer area, we just have a walkway in the front. We've eliminated the retaining walls around the side and we are regreating it and we've been able to preserve that drainage corridor in that front, that corner of the house.
Move on to the mitigation?
Yeah. This is just an enlarged version of the plan, then just showing separate tank, treatment unit, discharge into our system.
Actually, the two rain gardens that were on the previous plan, now you see where they are.
The water service connection that's proposed is running through here. Driveway, no garage, two parking spaces outside and a hammerhead to allow for maneuver to pull in and out of the driveway and just a walkway up to the front. There is a deck proposed on the second floor. The building, the structure itself, the foundation is entirely out of our regular state-regulated buffer here. And there is a deck that's overhanging off the second floor of that area.
Well, it's completely within the town-regulated buffer.
Yes, it is, yes, it is.
With the exception of perhaps the driveway, again.
The hammer.
Well, yeah, the hammer, all proposed activities within the town, the wetland buffers.
Steven?
I was tasked with, you know, working with the project team to see what we could do to provide some effective mitigation and as discussed, you know, everything was, you know, there's really not feasible to do anything outside of regulated area. You know, so we looked at what we could do to kind of protect the integrity of the primary wetland, which would be this state-designated wetland, number 008, which is a large Class 1 wetland that extends all the way down to the Duck Pond area on Douglas Road. You know, so it's a pretty extensive system that, you know, has a tremendous value. And, you know, so the mitigation strategy, we looked at, you know, the primary objectives were to look at how we could maintain water quality maintenance and provide nutrient uptake, you know, from any runoff that may occur due to the impervious surfaces that would be, you know, created. And how we're looking to do that is using vegetative filters, using fencing. We've got the wall, as Peter mentioned, to restrict the disturbance from residential activities. The wall will serve as an effective barrier. And then below that, we have a series of redundant filtration-type systems planned for planting, you know, that are a combination of native trees, shrubs and ground cover. And, you know, this project would require, based on your tree ordinance, the removal of 26 regulated trees. And so based on a tree replacement, 31 new trees would be required. And what we're proposing with the mitigation plan is we're actually going to be planting 63 new trees throughout the property. So it's approximately a two-to-one replacement ratio. And the additional trees are really designed to be part of the overall wetland mitigation plan. You know, and the mitigation of the buffer area would include, again, you know, the use of native trees, you know, that are going to be, you know, and improve the species diversity and then also shrub layer and ground cover. You know, the predominant tree type on the property, because of the disturbance over the years, is Norway maple and black locust are the two dominant trees. And because of the, you know, the geology that's in the area, there's a lot of rock outcrop and, you know, the soil is limited to, you know, small depressions on the site. So a lot of the trees that we see are compromised and that their root system is either at the surface or they're uprooted because there's just not the ability to, you know, anchor themselves sufficiently. So we've looked at areas to place the trees where we believe there will be suitable soil areas so that they will adapt and become beneficial over time. And a lot of the mitigation also incorporates the demolition of the existing residents and restoration of that area to preserve the stream corridor and preserve the edge of the wetland in, you know, that area. We, you know, I did, we did receive comments from Dennis and, you know, I, you know, we will address those. I appreciate Dennis taking the time to, you know, highlight some of his concerns. Certainly take a look at that going forward. But everything, I think, was predicated on the fact to see how we could, you know, it's a problem site, you know, a difficult site because of the wetland regulations. And from my perspective as a wetland scientist, it makes sense to me to minimize the amount of direct wetland disturbance. So by looking at the preferred alternative, it eliminates, you know, direct wetland impact that, you know, would be required to use the existing residents. You know, I, I'm looking back over my career in Newcastle and I think I could probably count four or five occasions where, after big storm events, we were called out to take a look at this property. And I do remember the flooding going right into the, you know, first level of the existing structure, you know, that it was a, you know, pretty common occurrence. And so structurally, you know, I think it's just to try to redo the existing residence in its current location, ends up creating a lot of additional site disturbance to the wetland. And to accomplish that, we would have to divert the stream and find a suitable septic area as well that would be outside of the edge of the wetland. And it just does not appear practical. And I think given that we have the area to work with, you know, in the northeast corner, it seems like we can work really hard to minimize the functional impact to the, to the wetland and try to preserve the integrity of that system. So we're more than happy to, you know, discuss anything further, but I think we've got a plan that strikes a reasonable balance and helps to, you know, preserve a significant wetland area.
It'll be a county issue. Do we have any information regarding the anticipated longevity, engineering longevity of this aerobic system? And the history on these and what kind of services required?
There is annual maintenance on these units. They're relatively new in terms of being allowed for, in the county, there's something that's been introduced. There's a number of different products out there similar to this. As far as I know right now, they have a very good track record and they would be required to submit monitoring results. They will have to collect samples and submit them to the county as a condition of this being put into practice. So it will be maintained and monitored on an annual basis.
And just like we do stormwater maintenance declarations with your board at the time, we're open to doing that kind of a maintenance declaration for the septic and then whatever reports get submitted to DOH, we could certainly simultaneously submit them to the town for Bob and Terry's review.
Okay, good, thank you.
Asia?
I'm Breja Bach from BAK Architecture. This project has been quite an interesting project. And our background, just a little bit about who we are. We're International Design Club out of New York City and we've done projects, well, we are offshoot of Quatmi Segon, Richard Meyer. I think those names, I mean, much too many people, Tom, you probably know who they are and know their.
Richard Meyer?
Richard Meyer.
Yeah, I worked with him many years ago.
I worked with him for seven, eight years, this is right-hand person for many years.
You collaborated with him on a project, yeah.
So you know the rigor and professionalism we are bringing into the project. I mean, projects that we've worked on residential, we did three residential projects for Steven Spielberg, Michael Dell's house, the Gates Foundation. So we kind of really engage the project in a different level in professionalism. First conversation has with Doug. We put in five criteria, what we want to accomplish on the project. One was efficiency of use of space. Second one was the view from Hardscrabble Road. This is a very busy road, what do people see at night when you turn their lights on? Is it visible, is it not visible? What is the sense of privacy? We want to be hidden behind, because right now, where the building is on the site, it's literally on the road. We're talking about less than six, seven feet from the edge of the road. You keep opening your door, you take one step, you're on the road.
It's your commute.
Can't park anywhere. So the third one was blending with nature. We are sitting on this phenomenal wetland and the view, if you go, so where the wetland is, you go up, a little bit of uphill where we're putting the building, the view is spectacular. And the idea is to bring in that nature within the architecture, not just plop in another colonial house on the site, which means blending in nature, or how we blend in nature is materials. We're not, this is, we're doing a very minimalist, modern, clean, simple design, but the materials are stone and we're actually, can you go to the next slide? So we're talking about, see, the roof is actually wood and all the verticals are stone. So stone and wood, we haven't gotten too far into the design yet because we still, yeah, this is a very preliminary stage of this design process. But the idea is to create that large, open, green space, elevated public space on the second floor so you have that spectacular view. By putting that flat roof, we're actually lowering that cone of vision from Hardscrabble Road. If you put a pitch in here, when you drive in Hardscrabble, you will see the building over the edge of the trees. This, we have renderings and computer drawings with all the trees located. You will not see this building where we located it from Hardscrabble Road. And the third one, actually, which is a big. And the third one, actually, which is a big item, was really the emphasis on sustainability and smart architecture, smart design, building design. So that was one of those things that we really want to emphasize on the building, solar panels on the roof and just really engaging the building at a different level and sustainability. And the last one, Doug is a dear friend of mine. He's one of my lifelong friends. So he has my personal guarantee that this project will come out really well. So that's where we are again, we are in the very, very beginning stages of the project on a design. Still needs to kind of go through layers, massaging the designing, make sure the design works. Any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick one on the second floor. Is that a can lever concrete slab?
Yes, it is. Well, we haven't confirmed we're going to do that concrete or wood yet. We haven't, we haven't, we haven't decided on materials. This is very preliminary.
The structure would be wood?
Most likely it will be steel.
Steel frame.
Yeah, depend, we haven't, again, we haven't gone that far into materials yet. But actually, very good question, we're putting all the public spaces on the second floor. So the second floor is where the living room, dining room or a kitchen is. Lower floor where the deck is, is all the bedrooms.
Is there a basement or is it?
No basement. It's a mechanical room. Mechanical, yes, mechanical, it's just for support reasons, mechanical, on the side of the building, the far left side of the building.
This, this, the system, the new system for the sanitary system, does that go in the basement? It's outside the building.
Outside, external, in its own tank.
Thank you. And above ground?
Below ground, underground.
And air is pumped into it?
Consistent to a septic tank.
The only thing is that you'll see, I guess, there must be some sort of access of air.
Just mention the erations, how does that work? Yeah, there'll be just a compressor, an air, that would inject the air into that and that'd be located, that could be in the building. It wouldn't be necessarily outside. And all you would see is probably just the lids to the tanks.
Right, does that run continuously?
Yes.
So I, just to clarify, because it means disturbance of soils, on slab or just a crawl space underneath, obviously not a full basement, but.
It's just a crawl space on the.
Okay, to the west, over here.
To the left.
Yeah, to the left, yeah.
We'll probably some storage underneath as well. It's not a full big.
Yeah, I understand, okay, thank you.
It's too much rock in that area.
It's under, essentially under the garage or something.
No, there isn't.
There's no garage.
There is no garage. There's mechanical space.
Yeah, I see it on the screen here, that's right, got it, thank you.
And the reason we have it there, because the site actually slopes down. So that's where we can actually use that space.
Slops in that direction.
So what Peter just quickly flipped past was the alternatives chart that quantifies, right, and the left hand column are various sort of impact areas. Then the five columns are five different alternatives. The column highlighted in blue was our preferred alternative. And each of those cells quantifies the impacts associated with each alternative for each impact area. You have the chart in your material, I think it'd be easier for Peter on the screen to flip through each of the drawings. We have a sketch plan that correlates with each of those five alternatives. This first one is reconstructing a new home in the location of the existing four bedroom house, which I think we could all agree is not the best property. We're happy to fly past that if we're all in agreement on that this is not the best option. Keep going.
This was, this was the initial plan that had been presented during our pre-application meeting. Three bedroom home, eighty eight feet in length, had the access come in, parking courtyard in front of the house, larger backyard area in a septic, similar septic we're shown before, three bedrooms. Disturbance associated with removal of the house and the patio in the front. And then we also at this time had studied what was a two bedroom configuration for this, which reduced that length of the house by eleven feet and minimized some of the disturbance on the west side of the property.
So it got shorter because there's one less bedroom than the earlier version.
That's cool.
But now we're back to seventy seven feet, so where'd you find the room for the third bedroom?
It was, it was eighty eight feet originally, we scaled it down to seventy seven feet showing.
And two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms. Based on our staff meeting.
In September.
At a recent, our most recent staff meeting, we had tried to come up with, I guess, more, or preserve more area, reduce some of the disturbance.
Here's the answer to Mr. Crowley's question, that it's smaller bedrooms and the same.
Thank you.
Same footprint of the house.
That's correct.
That's all I'm, just curious about.
But to go back to this, either as a three or as a two.
It's a three.
How is that even a viable alternative? It's in the wetland.
No, that's a two.
I don't think about a two, three, four, eighteen, doesn't matter, it's in the wetland.
Mr. Chairman.
That's not even an alternative, how can we, we couldn't begin to start, could we, if it's in the wetland? Is that the house right here?
That's the house. If we're looking at.
Oh, okay, you gotta turn the other one, okay.
Again, the wetlands are here and that's just the way we had shown it on our sketch. It is turned, it's rotated ninety degrees. But as a result of our September staff meeting, we had come back with removing the driveway that was located in front. We reduced the width of the driveway, put our turnaround outside of the buffer. We reduced the amount of rear yard and incorporated the rain garden on the western side.
Did you see that? There's a cartoon in New York recently had universe, parallel universe. Next to it, it was universe perpendicular universe. Just what this is.
This ended up being our preferred layout. The reduced length of the house to seventy seven feet, three bedrooms. As we had shown with this, as a result of our, that's most recent staff meeting. But then we also had shown what the.
Because staff asked, we still looked at what it would look like, keeping together the same length of the house, but a two bedroom configuration, how that would affect the septic.
So the septic.
Could I ask why you would keep the same length of the house if you're looking at a two bedroom? When the object would be to, I guess, with a two bedroom, minimize the impacts?
Well, we had shown the, in our, prior to our staff meetings, we had shown this as the two bedroom.
So in here we could. And the big, the reason why we showed this is the big question was, hey, if we bring it down to two bedroom, you know, logic would say the septic system would be much smaller. What we're showing here is that with this type of septic system, the two bedroom actually isn't that much smaller. So if we were to bring it down to two bedroom and move anything else, it's really a minimal impact.
Interesting, so that the, this kind of system, the delta between three and two, because of the nature of the system.
Two hundred and four square feet.
Yeah, I think it was like two hundred fifty.
And basically what happened is the, you know, we still need our depth flowing downhill. Where we were able to reduce the system was left or right, our width. So we've been able to shorten the length of the system and minimize some of the disturbance on that eastern side.
So the real focus of this is, hey, if we were to brand it, two bedroom isn't viable from a family perspective, but also show, hey, the septic wouldn't change really that much anyway.
Would there be any less likelihood or more likelihood of the county asking for build out of the expansion area between two and three?
No, no, I think we have a reasonable request for not improving the expansion area at this time.
Everyone says that.
Well, we have access.
I understand, everyone says that though. You're still dealing with county and department.
They will not make their decision on that until after the foundation exists, they can confirm that they still have the access and then we are preserving that sort of area.
That completes our presentation.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Sabrina, we have comments?
You know, I, I appreciate the, you know, the presentation. And, you know, the one thing that I still question is whether or not we can reduce the footprint of the house. You know, I appreciate the, you know, the two bedroom, you know, the three bedroom, creating a two bedroom. You know, the footprint is essentially the same. You know, and really questioning how can we minimize? You can't avoid being in the wetland, right? So how can we do more to minimize the impact? I think that the septic system is a great alternative, what you're doing with the septic system. But, you know, look at the pavement, look at the walkways. I, you know, I think the house design is a beautiful house design, but maybe due to the impact on the wetlands, you think about changing the house design. You know, I just, I have not seen the boards approve of a house in a wetland buffer and everything in the wetland buffer. I think the case can be made, given the existing house and where we are, but I don't think enough has been done to lessen the area of disturbance and to shrink the footprint of the house. So I didn't really go into zoning or anything because, you know, in looking at the information that was submitted, DEC has specifically asked you for alternatives and to prepare that application. I think that that's exactly what we've been asking for as well. And I'm not seeing enough change in these alternatives.
Just to, you haven't applied to DEC, correct?
Not yet. We haven't, that's going to go in any day now. We have like two or three positive pre-application meetings with DEC. And so once we had that feedback from DEC on this proposed layout, yes, Sabrina, they did ask for an alternative analysis. We expected to submit these same materials to DEC. We wanted to focus on getting a comprehensive submission to the planning boards, so we could at least kick off here. And then Peter's focusing on getting the DEC application again, like any day now.
Yeah, I would just ask that whatever you said to DEC, you copy Sabrina's staff, just so we have copied that application as well.
Just that we copied the town and then our application to DOH.
Thank you, Bob.
So could somebody help me with the numbers here? I'm sure it's here somewhere, but maybe you could just pull it out for me. The, there's a chart on C one oh one, which has a zoning information on it. And the proposed development, max, the proposed development building, the proposed development building coverage is twenty three hundred square feet. Hold on to this chart. Can't read that one, it's the same chart, no it's not. But in any event. I'm on sheet C one oh one and maybe that is, I can't tell.
That is C one oh one, I'm just trying to see if I can enlarge that chart for you.
Well, it says, it says maximum building coverage, this is a zoning chart. And the proposal is for twenty three hundred square feet. Is that the footprint of the building? That's a simple question, it doesn't matter what the chart says, I guess, I mean, what's the answer? Is it?
Yes.
Is that the right answer? And so what is the total two story building? What's the total building area of the house? Is it essentially twice that?
It's not, it's barely more than that, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, could you bring the chart up because I don't think, I don't think the footprint is twenty three hundred.
Where do you see that?
Elsewhere it says that the house square footage is.
That's really.
Yeah, it's like twenty five hundred.
The footprint is not. It's twenty five sixty one, if you look at the alternative plan, Tom.
Is twenty five hundred square feet.
Is the house according to the alternative.
So I guess I would, I understand Sabrina's point, but there are a couple of things I think in play here. One is, I think everybody agrees that you're not going to put the building where, you know, tear down the existing building and put the new building there. That if we were subdividing this property today, we probably would not create this parcel because you can't build on it. But it is what it is. And I just wonder, I mean, in the, in the premise that, I think legal premise that the property owner has a right to enjoy, you know, his property, a reasonable development of his property, it's our job not to get in the way of that, but it's our job to facilitate that in the context of what we do. So this is sort of like, hardship's the right term to use, but it's sort of a, I'm trapped here. In order for me to get what I deserve out of this property, I've done everything I can. And so I understand the concern about, well, can we make it smaller? But then with the spirit of being allowed to enjoy my property, is this house actually too big a house in the market that we're talking about? Is this an unreasonable house in the market we're talking about? And I'm not, I have to tell you, in the market we're talking about, for the houses we see come in, this is a small house. And so I'm not, I don't think it's necessarily an irresponsible proposal in the context of the challenge of the site and the size of the building you're putting on it. It seems to me it's sort of a reasonable ask from my point of view. So I understand Sabrina's point, but I think that it's asking maybe more than we ought to be because you could come in with a six thousand square foot house. And, I mean, we see that, but you're not coming in with something which is, I think, a much better fit in the context of what we're talking about here. So that's my feeling. And I think you put it in a logical place, you put it on what appears to be a plateau. Maybe it's a null right now, but you're going to level it a little bit, you're going to put it up there as far away as you can get it from all the wet stuff and, you know, driest land you can find. I'm having, you know, I'm looking for, you know, red flags, but I just don't see any at the moment for myself.
So if I could pick up on that, I have a question, which I think is, relates to your initial question. But first, I just want to say that I know the site very well. I've been driving past it regularly for the last decade. The existing structure obviously makes no sense, right? It is, I mean, it is literally on the property and it, I think for many years it had graffiti on it that said Mayo is bad.
Mayo?
Yep, my children enjoyed it. But, so it makes no sense there, right? I also want to commend you, I think that the applicant and the applicant's team made a very thoughtful presentation and I appreciate a lot of the thinking and you have anticipated a lot of our questions. And so I, you know, relative to other presentations, this was very clear. And I appreciate the thoughtfulness and the architecture.
I appreciate the zoning table, thank you. There it is.
But sincerely, you have helped us think through already, just by the presentation, a lot of the questions that would come up on the development of this site. To the question that I think Tom was beginning to ask and that I'd like to ask is, the building coverage of the existing, what is the delta between the existing house, which is in the wetland buffer, right? Or in the wetland, it's in the buffer?
Both.
Both.
Sometimes it's in the wetland.
Sure, sometimes it's just wet. But what is the delta between the existing building and the proposed three bedroom, seventy seven foot residence?
It's about five hundred and ninety square.
I think it shows it on the chart.
On this chart here. So we're looking at six. Our footprint for the preferred layout is one thousand six hundred and ninety five square feet. And the current structure is one thousand one hundred and eleven square feet. That's Tom's one in four.
Got it, so sixteen ninety five to eleven eleven.
And then similar to the square footage, if you see that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do think there's relevance to what's existing versus what's proposed as far as disturbance. And the delta there also seems quite small, given what's real. Like how small, how much smaller could it be for a new building? And to your point, Tom, I mean, twenty five hundred square foot home is small in this market. Beautiful, but, you know, presumably beautiful someday. So I, I wonder, you know, you know, is there a better alternative? I don't know, I, I see the other alternatives that you put in here, you know, they don't, you know, not like sways, there's going to be any number of alternatives that are worse than this one. But I don't know, Bob and Dick, your thoughts, but I do think that a lot of thought has gone into this. There's a lot of, a lot of road ahead of you to kind of figure this out and curious about the access to the right of way and all that. the access, um, to the right of way and all that. I mean, obviously a driveway would need to, you know, on hard scrabble makes no sense, and so getting that access is critical, I think. Um, I appreciate the thoughtfulness on the septic, uh, piece of it and preventing additional runoff into the, into the, uh, into the wetland. I mean, I, I like it.
And, and one thing that we just should mention is that on our initial presentation, the three bedroom, the total square footage was almost twenty-eight hundred square feet, and this preferred plan has been dropped down to twenty-five hundred square feet, so we have reduced that overall gross floor area as well.
During, during the pre-application meetings, those were the conversations.
Right, understood. And, and, and Sabrina, your point about how this board has never approved, uh, some, you know, home in a wetland buffer, right, that was, that was the point? I think it's an important one, and we shouldn't take it lightly, right? Because, because setting, setting a precedent, uh, is something that we're always worried about, and so, um, I don't take it lightly, um, but I think Tom's point is that this lot would not exist to be created today because it's, it's not developable, but it does exist, there is a structure on it. You know, we do, I, we like to think that we're trying to be helpful to property owners to figure out the best way for all parties to be able to enjoy their property, and so we need to think about it from that perspective, that's the most reasonable way. Conscious of the potential precedent that's being set.
I had a question, and that is again back to the septic. If for some reason the county does not approve this system, is your septic viable? I mean, with the so-called traditional, are you then stuck? Is that gonna be a critical element, uh, for this application to move forward?
It's a very good question, and I think what we'd be looking at is a very similar system in the location where it's currently proposed. I don't know if that answers your question or not, but I don't believe the health department, I, I believe the health department would agree with us that the area where the system is currently located is not a viable location to repair or replace or install a new septic system. We would be asked to look into alternative areas or other options. The location where we're showing the septic now is the location that the health department would accept the system to be installed if the house was new or if the house is in its current location.
But is that area sufficient for a so-called traditional septic, uh, disposal system?
It's gonna be very tight. We, it may, it may result in more disturbance in the buffer, possibly when you look at a conventional system with a primary and a reserve area there.
See, we normally, you know, uh, have a little bit more impact, input, excuse me, uh, from the health department before we move forward on, on these kinds of approvals, especially in this one where everything's in the buffer. Actually, I think during my time, uh, we have actually had to approve one house, and that was completely in the buffer way back in, in the dark ages, but it was, um, an extraordinary situation, and it was basically coming down to condemnation or else we had to approve it, so it was awful middle road. I was traveling up before, couldn't find it. But in any event, it, it's a very, very unusual situation, and from that perspective, again, I don't disagree with anything that Eldad or Tom has, have said, but at the same token, I would be interested, we know we're gonna have to go for variances. So, I think we should propose this site and even the orientation of the building to minimize the impact of, of that buffer, even if we spin it slightly so you have a different view, um, and, and move it up further into that, uh, I think it's the northeastern quadrant, uh, which is dry.
Are you sure that we just put seven?
And, uh, again, we know we're gonna have to go for a, a zoning variant, so go for it, because if we think it's environmentally, uh, an improvement, uh, and jockey around, you know, the, the driveway, the driveway.
I just want to understand exactly what you're, what you're talking about.
I'll talk about moving the house.
He made that.
This way, and perhaps even at an angle like this, where you've got more of the house out of, out of the area. Again, minimizing what we are going to have to, you're gonna have to have some in the buffer, but minimizing that, getting some of the house, if we can, out of the buffer, um, it just, it, it's, it's just a, a better situation for us, at least for me.
With, with the septic, could we do that?
I think the septic could stay right there, you're just changing.
Does it maintain a separation distance to the foundation, but we'll, we'll look at it.
But, but there's also, right, the, the driveway using a porous pavement or an alternative pavement.
Well, we've, we were proposing a permeable pavement in the driveway, based on our conversation with, with Bob, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, he had considered the permeable pavement to be an infiltration practice, and we weren't permitted to have it that close to the septic system.
If you slip.
Oh, but it's not, it's not my call, it's a county regulation, you can't have, that would be considered a dry well, and they have to need minimum fifty-foot separation, it's a county regulation, not my idea.
That's right, but based on that, we then had modified or revised the plan to show an asphalt driveway and then getting it.
Let me finish my thought. If, if you take the chairman's suggestion of shifting the house, moving the driveway on the other side.
Yep.
Right, which may be closer to the wetland, but it's still within the wetland buffer, and if there's separation distances there, then maybe it can be a permeable material, right? And, and I think that, again, it's about, um, minimizing the impact.
So, there are, um, there are, um, I, I understand all of that. These are the kinds of things.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
No, go ahead.
The driveways at one point was on that side. And then because of the drainage, because it was too close to that.
We even looked, I think, at bringing the driveway here at one time, yeah.
Yeah, it was because of the, the drainage pipe there.
So, I think the question is, and, 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 um, Bob's question is a good one, right? Uh, you know, seeing alternatives, I mean, maybe you have thought these through and they don't work, but it would be good to know that, um, because there is this, it's not even a quadrant, right, but it is the northeast, like, uh, little portion here that, that would be buildable outside of the buffer. Is there any realistic scenario of placing the home partially within that? And it would be good to see, and if it doesn't work, then, then it would be good to know why.
I, I agree, and, but, and one of the considerations which maybe was at play in the site plan was, it looks like there's an existing home right here.
There is, yes.
Which is, which is right on the property line, not talk about, um, something being, being grandfathered in, um, and that might, I mean, normally in our zoning, the side yard is forty feet in this, on each side, I think.
Okay, well, it's, it's usually ten, it, it could be.
No, and, and this is two acre zone.
Two acre, that is.
This is one acre.
One acre.
It's one acre.
And we're calling this to be a fifty-four.
And this also goes back to my first question, you know, where's the front yard? Because is it a side yard or a rear yard that we're looking at in terms of?
Yeah, fair, fair enough, but my, I guess my point is that normally in, because we have these side yards, they're there for a reason, they're, they're to sort of.
Yeah.
Reduce the impact of what potentially might look like density and give more space and, and all that stuff. And, um, so when homes are built to those, um, to those standards, you get that kind of a neighborhood, and that's what you expect in these neighborhoods. To, you would expect that regardless of where the property lines are, because nobody knows really when you're driving around, it's the distance between the homes, which is the, really, the effect that you're most concerned about, it's a long way of getting to my point, but, uh, to move, to put the house too close to that property line begins to sort of, not violate that premise, but, um, it, it, it sort of begins to detract, I think, from the overall, could detract from the overall character of the neighborhood. Long way of saying something.
Is that home occupied? It's not.
No, it's not.
So, um, I, my feeling is that, and this is maybe a little bit architect-to-architect talk here, but I always understood and, and believe and in practice that an architect's job is to solve a problem, not to create a problem. And, um, I have to commend, um, I'm sorry, I've forgotten your name.
Regia Park. Regia.
Your work here, because it's actually, um, very elegant with respect to actually solving the problem in the context. When I say solve the problem, an architect takes a problem, and the context is always, you know, the land and, you know, all that stuff, and you gotta figure out how to put this thing in there in a way that actually feels like it fits. And to me, this is an example of that approach, and I wanna call that out because I can't tell you how rare this is in this town, because we have, um, the developers and, and homeowners who wanna come in and, and, you know, put a, put a house on their property, and they'll take something out of, you know, a, a standard subdivision, ULI, this is how you build a multifamily home in this market, and they'll take this thing and just put it on the site and create problems with the, uh, with drainage and with, uh, on some of the steep slope sites you can imagine, you get these floor plates that are just, just don't work. And our, our, my argument's always been, wait a minute, let's like design the home for the site rather than bring this home into it and try and arrange nature around it and create just havoc everywhere. So, my feeling is that, and I, I understand, um, and I, I appreciate Eldad's question, is this the best solution? Is there another solution? From my perspective, I can't see anything, I mean, there are adjustments could be made in the location on the site, but I think that, that the design principles that have been brought to this and yield this, yielded this solution are probably about the best principles you're gonna find anywhere in architecture, the principles, and I think that they've been applied admirably here. Should it be moved closer to the, closer to the, uh, you know, the, the eastbound access or moved up and to the right? Perhaps, you know, that's something that is a reasonable ask that you guys could look at, and it might make a big difference when you, when we have to go and write our letter or memo to the zoning board, do we approve this or not? I mean, we're gonna have reasons why we do, and maybe sometimes in some places reasons why we don't, and as many as boxes you guys can tick off, you know, the better that would be. From my perspective, you know, I think it's fine the way it is, but if, if there's a desire to try and push it a little bit more, I would, I would, I would, you know, encourage you guys to do that. I, I wonder about rotating the house at all in any direction, it's so close to the road right now, rotating it, uh, tends to put one corner of the house, then, you know, back closer to the road, and there is a certain distance which is appropriate and comfortable, and it's already, it looks to me pretty close to the road for the houses, this, for this house, so, those are my thoughts.
Dick, did you have any thoughts?
I, you know, I, I think we're gonna have trouble with the county, um, and I, I think that really a lot of work has been put into it, but I don't think it's solved. You know, so it's, and I don't like the idea of anything being in a wetland setback, so.
Yep, okay, understood. Uh, we have comments from, uh, uh, Bob and Dennis, so why don't we take those? Bob, do you wanna run through your comments?
Uh, sure, good evening, Chairman and members of the board. I have twenty-three comments, I'm not gonna go through every dang one. I'm gonna go on, you, you pick ones that I think are kind of important, uh, regarding the stormwater, A through I, on my comment, stormwater S one, ST one F, I don't see any percolation tests or deep test holes done for those drain gardens, uh, they're gonna have to be done and witnessed, and you do need two foot of minimum separation from the groundwater to the bottom, and I noticed in your calculations for the sizing of these, you use the infiltration rate, so perk rates will have to be done, uh, contact Terry Rose, so you can do one deep and one perk in each one, that has to be done to make certain they're feasible where they exist. Also too, on ST one H, um, we've always had a longstanding policy where we do not allow credit, uh, for the footing of, for the foundation of a building that's gonna be completely demolished, so you have to add that one thousand one hundred and eleven square feet back into the pre-existing condition for the subcatchment DA one, pre-development drainage area one. All the other ones are technical items, I don't wanna bore everyone with, but they are important for the completeness of the stormwater report, the other seven remaining items. Uh, my general comments, um, I think we might have brought this up before, but obviously we didn't receive anything from the state yet. I know you had this email from Catherine Coffin, it's almost a year ago, but we still don't have, and I believe we still, you guys don't have approval from DEC, so when you do get that approval, that'd be great to send it to us so we can all see it and put it in the planning board files. Let's see, another one I have is, uh, GC three, obviously it appears to me gonna be removing that building, uh, which is very close to the roadway, and it's no doubt gonna be the in-zone and influence of the H twenty loading on that road, so you really should get a report, engineering report on that to make certain when that's all removed, um, structural stability is maintained in the shoulder, because that would all give way if not, if it's just put back there and not done properly, so you have to do a full engineering report on that. That's GC three. Uh, GC five, uh, the engineer, I guess, Architera, submitted just a letter based on an observation, which is great, but really it should be based on quantitative and quantit, quantitatively and quantitative information to demonstrate that the structural conditions of the existing foundation and the, and the soils are no good, um, that should all be stamped and signed by a New York State licensed PE, uh, that's GC five, and then GC seven, eight, nine, have to do with the sightlines coming out of the driveway on the common drive, going to Chaplain's Stimp Club, um, use a twenty mph out there for a one fifteen sightline, uh, coming out on hard scrabble, gotta show the sightlines out there based on the thirty mph, and that's two hundred feet, so show the triangles and any vegetation that nor trees that have to be removed, that's GC seven, eight. And then, um, number ten, obviously you have retaining walls, and they're about a hundred foot run, ranging anywhere from two to about three and a half foot up, uh, they ought to be structurally designed by PE, I don't know whether, uh, I would imagine DT will, DTS will be doing that. And those, uh, those are my substantial comments for tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Before we take Dennis's comments, uh, either Lino or Sabrina, would you just give us a rundown in terms of, uh, what's involved here in terms of the EC and DOH, and how this is all lynch together and lengthy, lengthy, not lynched, that's pathetic, length together?
Depending on where you are in your approval process, you will condition your approval upon successful.
DEC and DOH.
Yeah, DEC and DOH approvals, um.
Yeah, you won't be able to issue a building permit without those.
Exactly, so, so you can get them so far, but you cannot get them all the way without the other agencies acting.
And to your question, if there's, Mr. Chairman, if there's anything that results from the DOH-DEC review, for example, if they don't approve the enhanced system, if they go to the more traditional, we have to come back to your board that informed that approval, if there's a material change resulted as a result of the outside agency review.
Right, and you, you've done, you've done this before, right? And, and I, I think that if the board is in a position tonight to recommend this to the ERB for their review, then you should do that. Um, I do think that they should really redraw the plans to show the water line outside, not crossing the wetland. You should do everything you can to get that coming out of the driveway.
We'll open up a dialogue with the board.
Yep.
Yeah. But, but have your plans, your preferred option, show that, all right? Cause I think that the ERB's gonna wanna see you lessen that impact, and if there's an avenue to do that, start with that with them.
Yep. Dennis, you have some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First comments are just form, uh, related, uh, and again, you, you guys would avoid decor if you could avoid wetlands, so, um, that was just something with respect to the, not only the DEC part of the wet approval, maybe needed from the core, maybe another big deal, but still just to remain. So, you guys got clearance from, uh, SHPO, and I always mentioned, um, cause obviously the town has a code of chapter seventy-six, historic preservation, so in consideration of the age of that structure, I think it's a courtesy, obviously, or a requirement, probably the board would admit, that the Land Rocks Advisory Committee should just weigh in to make sure that, that house indeed should be, can be, is not an issue to be torn down, I just make mention of it. should be, can be, is not an issue to be torn down, if I just make mention of it. I just added this, I didn't know what to call it, other than residential socioeconomics. You know, obviously, there, there's been appeals to, you know, just nature of what, what's livable, what's not, but I just wanted to sort of go through the exercise that under SEAC or State or even NEPA. That's not really a, a consideration per se, but obviously, you know, the board is free to, to consider that. And I just, you know, if you're so inclined to, you know, require something a little bit more financially quantitative to determine what the differences in value are of a two-bedroom to three-bedroom home. That's something that would just be, you know, strictly to your board, because again, it doesn't support SEAC or NEPA. I know we, we've spoken about alternatives. And again, you know, not to minimize, but you know, chapter one thirty-seven, you know, does sort of require that. And, you know, since it is wetlands and wetland buffers, I mean, to, to say, I guess maybe to echo what Eldad was saying. The phrase only two hundred and fifty square feet, only twenty-five square feet, that, I, I would just caution, that's probably not a good approach to discuss that dialogue in relation to wetlands. Minimization is minimization at the end of the day, so. Just to sort of change the tone with respect to, you know, how the code is written. For Bob's point, you know, Bob was going all the way to actually receiving a DEC permit. I know that for the ERB, we've certainly, they've certainly heard applications that had also concurrently at least applied for the DEC permit, in some cases actually received the permit ahead of time of the ERB issuing their approval. And that's not really a big deal, because DEC typically, when those permits are issued, I think they're good for like five years. So they're, they're actually longer than the town's permits. And, and I also think it may benefit the board just to get the comments or insights of DEC after them doing a sweep of, of review of this. You know, it, it is, as Steve mentioned, you know, it's a class one wetland. There, there may be, you know, again, from that memo, I wasn't part of the, their pre-application meeting, so what they're saying may be absolutely true. But that email response to me just felt very standard in terms of, this is what you need to submit to us in order that we have something that's quote-unquote administratively complete. So then we actually can begin a formal review and, and, and make determinations of, you know, what, what's positive, where our comments may be, something to that effect. Just for the tree removal permit application, I just wanted to legend, just to, you know, illustrate what A and F mean. And as I'm sure everybody here knows, so the site, from the time you came to us for the first meeting until now, there's probably a few trees you can cross off the list, because they've either fallen or have uprooted to the point where, you know, I wouldn't require replacement for, for those trees. So, so I was just something that I made mention of, because if you want to amend the, you know, required replacement, you might be able to do so just based on what, you know, Mr. Toscano was so eloquently put, obviously nature doesn't want them there. As far as the mitigation plan comments, I could run, you know, through these with Steve. Just the one thing that I wanted to make note of with respect to your labeling, so. You have it listed as an intermittent water course, but DEC classifies it as a sea surface water. Usually those classifications, you don't see those typically. I do admit, and I, I wanted to put the justification here, I mean, to say the summer of twenty twenty-two was dry for this area is an understatement. I mean, three-quarters of the nature rain over July and August is like, you know, trees die, and we've, we've seen that because of, of that summer. So I just, I would just remove that word and just make it, make it a water course since it has a classification. And to the last point, which it seems like the board is in agreement with, and it is consistent with the regulations. That inconsistent with the code for Newcastle, chapter one thirty-seven. Yeah, converting a segment developed wetlands buffer, you know, to wetlands as a consequence of removing, you know, the overlying structures, that's certainly not inconsistent with the findings and purpose of the town code. And I would imagine also that DEC would not have issue with, with that conversion as well. The last thing, this is the semantics, wetland mitigation versus tree replacement. So I just want a little more clarity and clarification in the submission. You know, what is intended to sort of like duly satisfy those two requirements versus really what would be considered separate? And that's why I just called that as an example, you know. I'm fine with for tree replacement, you want to plant three flowering dogwoods to the front of the property, you know, between the structure and the road. But that really wouldn't serve that area as wetland mitigation, you know, because it would just be some planted trees probably and presumably lawn, so. That's, that's the extent of my comment, thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Okay, any other comments, questions at this point, or we'll send you on your way?
Hey, look, so to summarize, I guess, it would be wonderful if you sent us on our way to ERB, we'll take a look at that alternative. Either it works or approved, or it doesn't. Your board is certainly welcome to conduct a site visit and come out to the property, it sounds like Eldad and his family already know it. But if others want to come out, happy to have a site visit with the board as well.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add, we talked about earlier, any application, because I know DEC will change their minds, and you and I have seen it before, so. Anything with the DEC, please submit to us, and any updates or amendments they request. I'm sure they're going to request alternatives as well, so I'd like to see that.
Hundred percent. We appreciate all your feedback, we did try to anticipate all questions, a lot of it was fleshed out, three applications needed with staff, so Sabrina, Bob, Dennis, thank you all. And we appreciate the board's time and attention tonight.
Okay, very good.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
I have another question.
Okay, yes, Doug.
I note that in the upper left-hand corner of the map that we've designated the wetlands to be kind of like a wraparound. We said that's wetlands, and we did not. I can't find a measurement here yet, that how, well, how far are the wetland setbacks for our township? Does it encroach upon the building? Is it?
It's a red line.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's completely within the wetland buffer.
It's a hundred feet.
It's a hundred feet, it's hard to tell, yes.
It's a hundred foot buffer here.
Dick, on the site plan, it's the red hashed line shows the hundred foot buffer line.
Yeah?
You know, so that shows that, you know, the entire structure is within, you know, the buffer.
The structure is out of the, our?
No, it's, it's in the, it's in the town regulated buffer. And a portion in DEC buffer.
Sorry to say this, but it's, it's just, to me, a hurdle to try and get something that is more insistent with what we've done without setting a new precedent in the future. That'll be bothersome, and I think you may have that situation here.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's, it's one of the issues that, that we're going to have to wrestle with. And that's why I was asking if realistically there might be some changes in, in the location of the building on the driveway that we can, to Dennis's point, the code says you avoid before you mitigate, so trying to avoid. If we can, we'll look into that. Okay. In terms of timing?
Yeah, go ahead.
Timing, it's very late.
I'm thinking, we're thinking we'll come back first meeting in December, give us, that way we'll get the ERB in November, and we'll be able to make the submission deadline and come back in, in early December.
And by then, Dennis, will that work with ERB's schedule, or did you know?
Yes, I, I'm expecting other applications, they haven't met September and October, it's been quiet in that front. But I expect some submissions for November, so.
When do they meet, November?
Whenever the third Monday, date-wise.
So maybe, maybe the first meeting in December.
And the submission date?
The deadline for the December fifth meeting is November thirteenth.
So you have to be through your ERB meeting by then, I don't know if you are.
Well, you can also submit what you're going to submit to the ERB as part of the planning board application, you come to that meeting, you update us.
Precisely.
And Dennis will be witness to what the ERB directs you to do, and we should be moving forward.
By that time, hopefully, we'll have some initial feedback from DEC as well, the application is going in, if not this week, early next.
And also DOH, too.
So DOH, they, they've told us they're going to sit tight and pretty much do nothing until the local approvals process is done.
That's what they do best.
Yeah, the application is in, the town has it.
Yeah, no, it's really the only entity we can expect feedback from right now is DEC.
Okay, good, okay. Well, hopefully we'll see something, great, okay, so I'll see you in, in December.
Sure, Ben.
Okay, thank you.
Before you guys leave, I just want to point out that that was town board candy that you just.
That was town boy bribing candy for budget purposes.
I don't want to be responsible for the consequences of any boards.
I'll take responsibility.
Outside of our budget. Okay, we have one other, one other item.
Thank you.
Yep, good night. This is an amendment to the resolution of approval for Rozansky, Tenth Cynthia Court, application for site development plan approval for construction of an in-ground swimming pool, a pool, and stabilization of a gravel trail extending beyond the clearing and grading limit line.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Gary Barrett, I'm the Landscape Architect Project. And I'm here with the owner Greg Rozansky and his engineer Alan Filch. I just, I'm going to try to share here, and let me know if it pops up. My site plan pop up?
Working on it.
Almost.
There it is.
Okay, so I will try to get right to the point, because we know it's been a long meeting for the board. So we are back, we were, we were before the board in July, and, you know, we, we, we discussed the project, and we thought that we had, you know, we made some pretty good progress on, you know, putting a swimming pool on the property, also putting a stabilized grass trail to connect the, the owner's upper and lower backyards. We were giving a, a proof after resolution with conditions addressed to get back to the board for signature. And as we were working through those, a few months came up, and it became necessary to come back to, to the board to discuss them, and that's what we'd like to talk about tonight. So there's, there's two things, one is amendment to the clearing and grading line that we'd like to, the board to consider, and that would be to allow the, that would be to allow the drainage system. So what happened was, early on, it was envisioned that perhaps an infiltration system can go in this area. And this is an area that the previous developer had used, there's a lot of fill in this area, and not certain it's going to prove, it's going to pan out. I'm going to let Alan talk about the stormwater. But what Alan was able to find was an area down in here, in this area here, this is the lower front yard, it's mowed grass. And it's soils, and it's got good soils, and everything works from a stormwater point of view. The issue became that it was beyond the approved clearing and limit line. Where are my clearing and grading limit line maps? And the board has seen them before. Grading limit line that was filed for the Brandywine subdivision, and you could see it includes the common driveway and that kind of thing. And we were really working, when we were working with the board, when we were working with what we call the NICIC line, and that's this green area here. And then we had came, come back to the board and said, well, she, you know, we, 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 we need to, we, we need to adjust that a little bit, because we need to get this trail in here. And, and we need, you know, a little bit of extra room here to put the, the swimming pool in, so we worked with the, with the board. And what we did was, we said, okay, what we did was, and so the, the NICIC line was this green line, I'm going to try to blow this up a little bit, if I can figure out how to blow this up. So, the, the, the green line you see was the NICIC line. And the red line you're seeing is what we came back with, with the board, and said, well, you know what, we need to expand that green NICIC line to include these red areas in order to get this trail in, to get this pool in, but you know what, we're going to go in and we're going to contract the NICIC line in these yellow areas, so we balanced out the, and we were able to, and we were able to, to do that. But when we started looking at the drainage system, and the drainage system that would have to go in, it, it, it turns out that the drainage system was going to have to encroach in this lower area here, which is this area right here. So the entire drainage system to put it in, and Alan had designed it, and he had, this is that, you could see it in this tan line, that would be the grading limit line to install the system. He would pick up the drainage and trench drain across the driveway, and he would bring it down and then send it down into the chame- chambers. And that was about seventeen hundred and twenty square feet of disturbance, and most of that, well, not most of it, seven hundred and twenty feet of that occurred in the front yard, which is already in the, already in the clearing and grading limit line. But what happened was this area right here is a thousand and twenty square feet that goes beyond that green line, which was the NICIC line. So, that's what we'd like the board to consider and respectfully request an amendment to allow this thousand and twenty square feet to be added to the grading limit line, so we can put the, so we can put the stormwater management system there and, and have it function in native soils. And we would just say that right now, if you drove out there and you looked at it, it would look like, it looks like mowed grass. And once this is in and you drive by and you go down there and look at it, it's going to look like mowed grass. So there's not going to be any change in character to the neighborhood or the property once everything is in. And, you know, the benefits of putting it there, I'll let Alan, I'll let Alan talk to you a bit later. And the other, the other item that came up is that if the board recalls, because of the, because of the, the long nature of the driveway, and you have to share, this is, this is Cynthia Court, and then you come from the cul-de-sac, and then there's this long common driveway. And Bob surely did a great job of analyzing this and helping us out with this, about, you know, how much coverage you had to keep adding and adding and adding to this lot. So while they had a modest driveway on their lot, they had to take portions of all of this driveway. And what was happening is we were over on development coverage and we needed to go to the zoning board. But as we started looking closer at, at the survey and getting ready and to, to, to go to the zoning board, what we realized, and we studied the survey a little bit more, and this is the survey, this is the ASBIL survey of what's out there. And what we've noticed on the survey was that the surveyor differentiates between two different types of walls on the property. You see this symbol here, these were retaining walls that were built by the builder when he was building the property. But, and, and they're called, he calls it stone masonry retaining wall. But if you look down here, and this is a wall that we, we labeled it wall number seven on the plan. And it, they, they label this stone wall, and you can see it's got a different symbol. And it occurred to us that this would probably qualify, because, you know, pre-existing stone walls, we were going through the coverage calculations sheet, trying to get ready for the Z, ZBA. And, and we noticed that we had had on our development coverage plan, we had called out wall, it was this wall down here, we had called it out as, I think, called it out as wall number seven, I want to just blow up on it a little bit.
Is that the farmer's wall?
That's the farmer's wall. And so we realized that, you know, that wall should have never, that hundred and eighty-eight square feet of wall, and as you know, it's in the, it's in the middle of the woods. That should have never been included in the development coverage ca- calculation. So when we took that out, whereas when we were before the board in July, we were over on development coverage by about forty-nine square feet, and that triggered going to the ZBA. But when we took this hundred and eighty-eight square feet of, of existing, pre-existing wall out, it turned out we are no longer over on development coverage, and the property is now compliant from development coverage. So we don't think there's any need to go to the ZBA. And those are the two issues we, we have going on right, right now, that we'd like to discuss with the board.
Okay, so when it comes to the, the farmer's wall, I mean, that's just good news, it pulls it outside of all, so, there's nothing really.
That seems like a non-issue.
No, it is a non-issue, it's just that we have to change the resolution.
Yeah, okay. And then the other, Alan, you want to speak about the drainage system that you're designing there, but it's, it's going in a lawn area, so it doesn't seem like a, a big lift here?
Right, tha- thank you, that's correct, this is going into a lawn area that was obviously previously disturbed, disturbed in the sense that it was probably wooded at one time when the common that serves these lots was installed. And, you know, it remains a lawn area in the front yard. And I'll just say that we did some probing in the front yard, you know, I'll say behind, to the, to the east, if you will, of the, of the tanning wall. What we found there was fill material, and kind of miscellaneous fill material, to say the least. And a lot of boulders.
And a lot of boulders. It looks like it was just the, the remnants, if you will, after all the work that was done, was just placed there. And it's not an ideal place, location to actually install chambers or almost any stormwater management practice. What you really want to do is find natural soil, because you want, what you want is to be able to have the degradation of the soil. We found a sandy loam soil during the young, for in deep areas, which Terry Rowe came out and observed it as well. And so what we found was a natural soil, which really provides a better location for renovation and stormwater runoff. And so that's one of the reasons we ended up there in the first place. It really is a preference to have, you know, to have a, a natural soil versus something that isn't just for installation and for treatment purposes. You know, we did test the soils in that location as well. We found depth of soils of seven feet, till just we had shattered rock. You know, so it was easy to dig through, but that's what we hit. And then we ran the percolation testing in that location. We had eight and a half inches an hour. So we had a very, very good percolation rate. And so I, I think with, and as Jerry, we noted too, as you noted also, Mr. Chairman, is that this area is lawn. It'll be, you know, now and in the future will be lawn. So yes, I understand it's a modification of clearing, grading, limit line. But, you know, it's, it, the character is not going to change with the installation of the stormwater management practice.
Alan, the stormwater management device will be a CULTEC system?
That is correct. It's a subsurface chambers CULTEC system. It's the CULTEC 280 chamber, which is a 26 and a half inch high chamber.
Right.
And it will provide treatment of the water quality volume and peak rate attenuation of flows from the property.
The, the, the topography drawing, the drawing site plan shows topography on it. Looks like it, that area is part right now of a very gentle sort of drainage swell.
It's adjacent to that, that drainage swell that runs to the east side of the road. That is correct, but it's, it's up from it.
It's, it's a little bit uphill from it.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
And, and I have done it too. We, we, when we did our deep hole testing there, there was no seeps or no groundwater that was evident in the deep hole test that was there. So, you know, the deep hole test was to an elevation that is well below the, the elevation of the drainage, that drainage swell.
Well, you know, if you, if you look at, at the overall topography of, you know, the entire sheet to the upper left, you can tell that before they put the road in, this was essentially a, a very shallow sort of drainage valley here. And these are the areas, I think, where you're likely to find, you know, a deeper soil, sediment, sedimentary soils, sedimented soils in here. So I guess it's, you know, the, the rock would be more likely on the higher ground rather than here. So it's not a surprise that you found good dirt here. Am I right?
Correct. Yes, your assessment is correct.
And, and since this is a lawn area, this will not require any clearing of any trees?
No, I think it can be constructed in this location without impacting, correct. There's no, there are no trees that will definitely be impacted through the installation.
So the request is to move the line, essentially?
Basically, yeah.
Yes. Yes.
That's in the drawing.
Yep. Yes. Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
I would recommend it.
You want your, your?
I, I, there's really, you've already discussed everything that I commented on. I would recommend that you schedule a public hearing. And suggest a resolution be drafted.
Right. Bob, you have some technical notes for the applicant, for Alan and Jerry?
I was going to say, Bob, I, I did review your, your comments as well, and we will address. They're very straightforward.
Yeah, I have no problem. If you're going to prepare a resolution, just put them in as conditions prior to the signing of the map.
Okay, very good. So the resolution and hearing are in the same.
Yeah.
So what we can do is.
Public hearing and resolution.
We don't need any more material, right? We have the material.
No, I don't think we need anymore.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify myself. I spoke about this with, with Jerry. So there, there are no, they're going to be able to work around the trees. And when I say those trees, there is a replanted row from NICIC. So there is like replacement trees sort of running the front. It doesn't show up on the drawing. When I visited the property and like, oh yeah, they planted. And they're all doing very well, as a matter of fact. So I just mentioned this to Jerry and said, you know, so whatever techniques you need to do to, you know, install this, just make sure that these trees don't get impacted. Because then that steps on the replacement requirements for the construction of the home and it just gets muddy quickly, so.
So I think we should include in the resolution some sort of acknowledgement of that and that the, the applicant will take the proper steps to protect the, the, the road and trees. All right? And so what we can do is, I don't know when, next time we could do this. I don't think, you know, the first meeting in November is too soon to get a resolution ready. So how about the second meeting in November?
November 21st.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
So what we can do is, we can entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing and also direct staff to draw up the resolution so that we would be in a position to approve and be done with this before Thanksgiving.
You have to say the date.
November 21st, right? Yeah. Felicia said it. She said it so well. I just wanted to say it again. So is there a motion to, to do that?
No.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, and the last item we have are the minutes. Excuse me, 2, September 19? As amended, I guess they were amended. So the terms we have here, I think, are somewhere, I don't have to. So as amended in your motion to adopt the minutes, that were revised on the course of the date today?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Is your motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Aye.
Thank you all. It's a late night. I appreciate.